Okay, we will get started then. It is 5:30 on Monday, April 13th. I don't have my book in front of me, but I will try to announce this meeting the best I can like I usually do. This is a public meeting of the West Bend Joint School Board Number One. More than 24 hours prior to this meeting, the notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter was posted on our district website at the West Bend Community Memorial Library and at all of our school district buildings. Superintendent Kirkagard, can you verify this meeting is properly posted?
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. And we are going to stand for the pledge, and I see that Kurt Redholtz has an American flag behind him. So if you don't have a flag in your own room, we'll just look at Kurt's flag and we'll say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, thank you for that. And hopefully, the board has had an opportunity to look at tonight's agenda. Before we do that, I'm going to take a roll call and make sure that we have all seven board members here. So if you could unmute your mic, and I'm going to do a roll call. So Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Zweiger.
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Joel Ongert, who am I missing?
Me, Tony.
Tony Schmidt, sorry, Ms. Schmidt.
Tony, I'm here.
All right. Yeah, I can hear you. Yep, I just didn't see your picture on the screen. So here we go with our first virtual meeting. We have a quorum of the board present, and hopefully you've had a chance to look at today's agenda. And I will make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Great. And just a quick discussion, what I would like to do is move item, it's listed under action items, item H, which is a fast track recommendation for policy 187, public participation at board meetings. I'd like to move that up in the agenda tonight and put it right after public participation. Anybody object to that?
Not here with Fisher.
Yeah, would you like a motion for that, Joel?
If you wouldn't mind making a motion on that.
Uh, I would still move.
Second.
Great. So our agenda then will have item 4H moved up to under public participation. Any more questions, comments? I'll be doing everything by a roll call vote tonight. So I will start. I'm an aye. Ms. Dove.
Aye.
Mr. Redholtz.
Aye.
Mr. Zweiger.
Aye.
Mr. Fisher.
Aye.
Ms. Justman.
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So that does take us to public participation tonight. And before we get started, I would like to point out that obviously we've made arrangements to have virtual regular board meetings, which we're doing tonight. And we obviously haven't made any adjustments to how we do public participation. So what we thought we'd do for this meeting is just simply tell the public to email in your comments either to myself or to Mr. Kirkagard, and we would just read them out loud. The only real parameter we put around that was send us your comments by 3:30. And when I read them, try to make sure they're not too long and so that I can stick within three minutes of reading comments. So I have about 11 comments to read tonight. And although many of them pertain to the same topic, I thought I would just go ahead and read them all. So everybody okay with that?
Uh, yes, if I might suggest, I think that it's great that we're going to read them tonight. But I'm wondering if it would make sense to actually post the emails as they were received, maybe as part of Board Docs. Because I can understand the challenge when you're reading something and maybe something's underlined or maybe it's old and how you read that, you might lose something in the translation. And so I'd suggest that we post these in their entirety to Board Docs for the public's review.
I agree with Chris. I think that's a great idea. This is Nancy.
I would assume that can be done, and I don't see why we wouldn't post them to Board Docs or the meeting minutes of this meeting. So I think we can figure out a way to make that happen. And Chris, you bring up a great point. You know, I'm going to try to read these word for word. And I'll apologize in advance if I miss a word or pronounce something incorrectly. Some of these comments, for instance, have comments that are written in parentheses. And typically, you know, you might not read that out loud. I'm going to do my best to read everything out loud. So.
So Joel, before we get started, this is Mr. Kirkagard. I would like to just say, I inadvertently or we inadvertently had the comment section wrong on the agenda to begin with. To begin with, fortunately, it said that it had to be on the agenda. That was brought to my attention early Friday morning. That was a mistake. We fixed it early Friday. We got it changed on the Board Docs on our website. On all, we re-sent it to all the places that we sent it to. And I personally went around to every one of the schools to make sure that the correct posting was there. And so it was a mistake. It wasn't intentional. We got it fixed on Friday while in advance of the 24-hour notice. But it originally said one thing, and we, as soon as it came to our attention, I think Jody Geenan brought it to my attention, and as soon as she did, I looked into it, got it fixed. And so, public, I apologize. Take it away, Joel.
Okay.
Don, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Don, just for anyone watching at home, could you read to us what the correction was? The full sentence, what the corrected sentence was?
I can. I'll go get it so that I have it right in front of me. And then while Joel reads it at the end, I'll make sure we have that available that I'll read it at that point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the first letter is from Mary Wyden. Mary lives at 5629 Colleen Lane in West Bend, and she's a district resident. It says, "It has come to my attention that the school district is currently violating policy 187 by refusing to allow public participation on items not on the agenda. The policy sets up parameters for public comment on issues not on the agenda. It's a very good policy for public input into our government schools paid for by me and the community. Is this accusation true?" And then there is a hyperlink which would take you to policy 187, and I'm assuming she doesn't want me to click on that and read that, so I'm going to continue. "From the current policy, participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. The school board and administration of the district recognize the value and importance of public input in board meetings. Proposed changes prepared by Andy Sarno, Director of Finance. Topic and background: Virtual meetings are upon us and allowing for appropriate feedback of the district stakeholders remains of high importance even during these times of change and uncertainty. The current language of policy 187 related to public participation at board meetings is silent for public comment during virtual meetings. Hence, two primary changes are recommended for approval this evening, which enacts the fast-track adoption within Board Policy 151, allowing an approved policy revision on the first reading the evening of Monday, April 13, 2020. First, current public participation allows for not just comments included on the agenda, but also on other topics the stakeholder wishes to address. The proposed language has a strike through to remove other matters to ensure focus and collaboration on topics with which have already been articulated for that meeting's purpose. At any time, community members are still encouraged to reach out to board members and/or administration on other matters with which the stakeholder believes communication is required. This is very confusing. Not only that, this is inappropriate to be this vague in fast-track changes in a virtual meeting. Great way to get ahead with something without the public's knowledge. It sounds like the public will not be allowed to comment on topics unless they have already been articulated for that meeting's purpose. There is no reason to make that change. The public has little input as it is, and this appears to be a power grab to keep the public quiet about issues going on in our schools that a community member wishes to bring to light at a public meeting. What about parents who, with the board, to be confronted about something affecting their child? Yes, there is a process. However, the process does not include our elected officials. This proposed policy change takes away the voice of the public at public meetings. Sad, scary, wrong. End of comments." That was from Mary Wyden. The next one is from Megan Whitmore, who lives at 178 Wilson Avenue in West Bend. "Hello, I am Megan Whitmore, a mother of two and graduate of the West Bend School District. I am disgusted in this time of uncertainty. Our elected school board members are taking advantage of social distancing and trying to silence their constituents. The removal of the words 'non-agenda items' from policy 187 inhibits the public from having a free voice in front of the school board. By limiting topics for public discussion, you are silencing students, teachers, and parents from discussing issues that matter to them. This directly goes against the verbiage and the remainder of the policy that the school board and administration of the district recognize the value and importance of public input in board meetings. This change should not be made. I ask that at the very least this discussion be tabled until the public is able to attend in person, rather than only being able to communicate through limited venues. Fast-tracking this change at a time when no one is able to object face-to-face as cowardice, thank you." That's from Megan Whitmore. The next one is from Mary Wild at 3385 Rock Ridge Road in West Bend. She is a parent of a student and a resident. "Now more than ever, we need transparency. Both government and local bodies and leadership roles must act in full public view. Without transparency, rumor, and conspiracy theories infect communities with mistrust and misinformation. The Safer at Home Emergency Notice is not sufficient grounds to swelter public participation. I read the April 13, 2020, West Bend School District School Board Agenda, and am very concerned about a fast-track to change of WBSD policy 187, public participation at school board meetings. The procedures for public participation in board meetings are very clear and is not allowed to go on for hours. Why would you want to shut down public participation for a non-agenda item? Even planning to change policy 187 is a problem. Open meetings cannot fall victim to social distance measures. Transparency is both a legal and unethical responsibility of public officials at every level. Please make sure that you continue to look for creative ways to include the public. I do not agree with fast-tracking a change to policy 187, public participation at board meetings." Again, that's from Mary Wild. The next one is from Randy Marquardt, who lives at 625 South Indiana in West Bend. Hello, Mr. Ongert, excuse me. He starts with, "Mr. Ongert, I am writing you to address the whole board in regard to the public comments policy. One would assume you have more important matters than this, with the health concerns and challenges of transitioning to virtual learning. But I am aware that times of crisis can also be viewed as opportunities to do what can't easily be done when the public is looking. If as board members you have no interest in hearing from your constituents, whatever the topic, then you are not really representing them either and might as well step down. This is a good policy. It has served people from all political viewpoints since it was enacted, and there is no compelling reason for it to be changed, much less in this fast-track method simply to avoid scrutiny. Thank you, Randy Marquardt." The next one is from Ken Schmidt. Ken Schmidt lives at 1705 Sylvan Way in West Bend. "To the board members of the West Bend School District and Mr. Kirkagard, my name is Ken Schmidt, 1705 Sylvan Way, West Bend, Wisconsin. In the Saturday, April 11, 2020, edition of the West Bend Daily News, page 3A, I read about a proposed policy change in regard to policy 187, public participation at board meetings. The change would limit comment by the public to agenda items only. I was extremely disappointed that this was proposed and even considered. I see this as censoring the public. This is a way of avoiding input from the public on subjects that would otherwise most likely be conveniently ignored by the board because it might be a different and possibly a critical point of view. I was on the board for three years and know that board members were quite uncomfortable with being confronted with concerns of the public. However, it was only when concerns were made public that then they were addressed. I cite two. One was the privilege test that asked very intrusive questions about values and beliefs. The other was the routine criticism of conservative political views in a required government and politics class that was brought to light in an article about a 17-year-old West Bend high school student in the March 2019 issue of Esquire Magazine. Both would have been ignored if it were not for public input about them. Beyond the above, I am concerned, very concerned, that this policy change is being fast-tracked. This is not just a change of spelling or grammatical errors. This is substantive change that affects all the stakeholders in the district. This is something that needs to be discussed and thought through as the ramifications and consequences. I urge the board to reject this change and maintain the present policy as it stands so as to maintain the openness, transparency, and integrity of the board. Sincerely, Ken Schmidt." The next one is for Monte Schmiggy, who is a district resident and lives at 707 East Kilborn Avenue. "There is a proposal before the board to fast-track changes to policy 187 on public participation that removes the ability of someone to address the board on matters not on the agenda, among other things. This fast-track proposal, insofar as it addresses what topics the public may address, is a violation of policy 151. If this did not go through the policy committee, it is a violation. Furthermore, this kind of change is not permitted for fast-track adoption. It is a substantive change and not an emergency measure. I quote the part of policy 151 on fast-track adoption. "The Board Policy Committee may recommend fast-track adoption of policy changes when the changes are in formatting, grammar, or simple correction or textual updates that do not change the effect of a policy, as well as for policies requiring expedited adoption. I do not see in the compensation plan a definition of base wage that coordinates with the limitations of State Statute 111.704. Without a definition and publicly accessible accounting, it isn't possible to determine if the board is in compliance with Act 10 legislation. Prior and subsequent to my departure from the board, I informed Mr. Hamelman of the situation that existed at the time with regard to base wage. Nevertheless, base wage was internally redefined, likely resulting in an increase above the level allowed by law for a one-year increment without a referendum. Transparency requires a definition of base wage and annual accounting of compliance with 111.704 for the benefit of administration, staff, and taxpayers. There should be a definition of base wage in a policy requiring such annual reporting of adds, drops, and increases in compliance with 111.704. The program overview linked by the Science Textbook Proposal is unavailable to the public. I can only imagine that this textbook will contain rationalistic explanations for the origin of the universe and age of the earth in conflict with the historical record of the Bible and Torah. If there is no allowance for alternative views, this is tantamount to an establishment of religion in conflict with the First Amendment. Religion isn't only theological but also anti-theological. Thank you, Monte Schmiggy." The next one is from Terry Lyon. Terry Lyon lives at 4870 Jamestown Place in West Bend, and he is a parent of a student in the district. "Hello, I have been corresponding with a couple board members about my concerns during this coronavirus outbreak. I have read the executive summary from your finance director in the virtual meeting policy 187, as well as the agenda for the meeting. My questions for the meeting today are as follows. One, with a terribly slow rollout of online learning for our students, when can we expect full classes online? I expect an absolute date. West Bend schools are so far behind other schools in Wisconsin that the board and especially the administration should be embarrassed. A few homework assignments each day are not adequate for a positive learning environment, and taking spring break for the teachers was ridiculous. Two, will the kids attend summer, excuse me, will the kids attend school into the summer as they need to to be ready for the next grade? If not, why not? Education is the priority, isn't it? I also see that the board is attempting to prevent asking non-agenda questions. Why? Four, there should be no further pay for coaching this year. These positions are part-time and do not qualify for unemployment. Therefore, it will not cost the taxpayers further. As far as I know, the board meetings are not limited in duration. The board members freely ran for and were elected to their positions. So why now is there going to be a limit on non-agenda questions? If we are to schedule to be on the agenda for any topic that concerns us, that sure would limit our access. As far as I am concerned, the only item the board needs to move quickly is online learning. Regards, Terry Lyon." The next one is from Valerie Brusset, who lives at 2465 Country Creek Circle. Obviously, a resident of the district, she says that. "I am a resident in the West Bend School District. My question is, why is a change being made to policy 187 eliminating other matters from the wording of the policy? I believe that residents, including students, need to have issues of concern heard in a timely manner. Delays of a number of weeks before an item is placed on the school board agenda and brought to the attention of the community for public participation shows a lack of concern on the part of the school board for the students and residents of the WBSD. If an issue is brought forth by a WBSD resident during a school board meeting and that item is not on the agenda, will that citizen be denied the opportunity of their free speech? Valerie Brusset." The next one is from Jody Geenan, 1511 Primrose Lane in West Bend. "I would like to thank the school board for amending the original agenda per my request Friday morning, which violated policy 187 by eliminating the public's parents, students, and staff's opportunity to comment at the school board meeting on items that are unrelated to tonight's agenda. However, I am disappointed that the board did not honor my other requests to remove the agenda item regarding fast-tracking a change to policy 187. The board likes to talk transparency, but eliminating this public platform is a contradiction to transparency. In addition, as I pointed out in my request, fast-tracking a change to policy 187 is another violation of the board's policies and procedures because it was not presented in a public policy meeting beforehand, even if the change is only temporary and the board accepts letters of concerns. I would also like to point out that I am frustrated that part of tonight's agenda includes the board giving its stamp of approval for a primary resource for physical science without properly notifying all stakeholders and allowing public input, especially when such process was an issue not too long ago regarding the new curriculum for ninth-grade biology. Parents are the primary educators of their children, so they should be treated in the very least as partners in public education next to their teachers. Taxpayers should also have an opportunity to voice their comments on items that are affected by their hard-earned dollars. After all, the students are the future leaders of the community of all stakeholders. Here are some reasons why we must allow the public to submit comments at the school board meetings on topics outside of the agenda that are within the jurisdiction of the board. One, letters submitted to board members may never be acted upon, and the concerns may never be brought to the attention of the public like public comments at the beginning of the board meeting help to ensure. Two, although the board claims this would only be temporary, how do we trust the board to revert back to allowing all comments when the board was originally set to remove this platform before they even fast-tracked the temporary policy change? Three, considering that public comment time is at the beginning of the agenda, even if stakeholders wish to speak on agenda items, it's difficult to anticipate what exactly will be presented at the meeting in order to know if a comment is worthy of making. With the ability to speak on items unrelated to the agenda, the stakeholders can comment on past agenda items at future school board meetings. Thank you, Jody Geenan." The next one is from Carol Hager at 575 Ridge Road in West Bend, and she says she is a resident taxpayer and a former parent. "Here are my comments I'm submitting to be read during the public participation portion of today's virtual school board meeting. I'm concerned about the agenda item number 5H that calls for a physical science text to be approved by the school board. Was there a public notice asking for a review of this textbook by parents as well as community members? I suggest that when items such as textbooks are to be approved, that the public, not just parents of students, should be duly notified by several means, i.e. press releases, medical articles, district website, excuse me, press releases, media articles, district website, and lastly, Facebook posts. Many of us remember recently when the biology textbook was to be approved by the school board, and beforehand, there was no public notice for community members to be involved in a review of that textbook. There was only a Facebook post, hardly the best way to notify the general community. I am also concerned that the volunteer private task force and its findings have been largely ignored by the school board. The task force came together after the failure of the 2019 referendum and looked over solutions for deferred maintenance of school buildings in addition to declining enrollment. It has been six months since their findings were reported, and the school board has taken virtually no action regarding the recommendations of this task force. In fact, the only work being done currently is the high school library renovation, something that was not considered critical by the writers of the referendum, such as security, HVAC, STEM classrooms, technical space, et cetera. Finally, I'm concerned about the confusing paperwork regarding today's school board meeting and whether there would be a fast-tracking of policy 187 which pertains to public participation on agenda items versus other topics of concern. Originally, the agenda stated that the topic of the comments must, italics, pertain to an agenda item. Those instructions were downright wrong, and since then, the agenda and accompanying paperwork has been revised to the point that it must be confusing to the public. Is this a deliberate choice of the school board to confuse the public so that they are uninformed about what the board will be voting on today? Or is the school board and its staff so incompetent that they are not knowledgeable about proper policies and must be called out by local citizens who point out the major errors being committed by the current school board? It's been reported that this motion will be revisited, maybe in July, in parentheses, Washington Co. Insider 41320, in parentheses. Can we trust the board to remember to revise this policy again? I am extremely concerned that my comments will not be read today because they may feature similar topics to other public comments since 30 minutes are allowed for public participation. If there are less than 10 people commenting, at three minutes, all submissions should be read aloud, whether or not they are similar. Reading all the comments will give the public an impression that certain topics are of great concern and should be addressed by the school board. Carol Hager." The last one is from Bart Williams at 2420 Skyline Drive in West Bend. "Public participation comment from Bart Williams for 413, 2020, West Bend School Board Meeting. I expect my comment below to be read accurately and in full with no changes or deletions, -BW. This comment is from Bart Williams, 2420 Skyline Drive, West Bend, a former two-term West Bend school board member. I urge the board not to change policy 187, public participation at board meetings. On page one of that policy, under Participant Responsibility, Section 2 states comments may involve agenda items or matters not on the agenda but relevant to the authority of the board. That statement in policy 187 is in effect coming in 2 and 4 tonight's board meeting until/unless change. Thus, you already violated policy 187 last Friday with your original agenda, even though public participation was scheduled as item 4 and possible changes to policy 187 scheduled after that. As agenda item 5I, you violated policy 187 by stating in your original agenda the topic of the comments must pertain to an agenda item for that evening's meeting. After many complaints, you removed that policy, violating sentence. You are considering deleting the part of policy 187 that allows district residents, comma, et cetera, comma, to address the board on non-agenda items. You want to censor us. I had a key role in drafting policy 187. One year plus before I was elected in April 2011, the board hid agenda items under such non-transparent captions as "board reflection." Since the public didn't know what that secretive caption meant and were only then, and were only allowed then to comment on agenda items, residents could never address the hidden business the board was doing under such an illegal caption as "board reflection." That's why current policy 187 was and is needed. We wrote policy 187 knowing we would get some good input and some false criticism, but we, and we got both. But instead of censorship, we quietly listened and honored the policy like accountable adult board members. You're trying to wrongfully fast-track a major censorship-imposing change to policy 187 under the myth it's allowed by policy 151. The administrative rule for policy 151 states the fast-track method is for formatting, grammar, or simple correction or textual updates that do not change the effect of the policy. Your planned changes are not limited, your planned changes are not minor changes. Your changes would get the open and welcoming all input aspects of the policy, all without going through a policy committee hearing like other changes. You're going out of your way to censor us. Here is what I urgently ask. One, under agenda item number 5I, you drop consideration of any policy 187 changes. Two, apologize for violating policy 187. Three, you apologize for trying to fast-track censoring our community. If you insist on censoring us, board members who voted to do so should resign immediately. Please also know that several formal written complaints will be filed against you in several venues. Recall petitions will be taken out against all board members subject to recall. We will inform the public early, often, and prominently of your censorship if any of you plan to run for office ever again." And that's from Bart Williams. And that's probably a good example of one that we should post online because there's a lot of things that are bold, underlined, bold and underlined, and so forth. And so I think that's a great suggestion to post those. And so, I think that's a great suggestion to post those to our minutes or board docs or, or both. While I was reading, my computer closed on me, so just opening that back up. We are now going to take up action, or potential action, on fast-track recommendation for board policy 187, public participation at board meetings. And I'm gonna start off a conversation on this a little bit and then maybe turn it over to Superintendent Kirkergard. The way I see our current board policy 187 is our current policy is set up for in-person, regular board meetings that are held in a boardroom. And the policy talks about how people who wish to participate need to fill out a comment card, hand that comment card over to the president. Then the person wishing to participate is called to the podium where they will state their name and address and then give their comments to the board. So, in my personal opinion, reading, you know, these letters tonight clearly don't, don't align with what our current policy is. I, I was more than happy to read those letters. I think we did the right thing by giving the public an opportunity to email letters into the board tonight. But I think that we also need to adjust our current policy to allow for these virtual meetings and what are the parameters that we set up to accomplish that. So, things like email us your comments by 3:30. Email them to both the president and the superintendent just in case the president can't be there to read the comments, the superintendent can. I tried to read these letters in three minutes or less, but I think maybe a good suggestion is to say, let's keep your comments to 300 or 400 words or less when they're emailed in. I also think it's good practice that we ask, obviously, for name, but for address and/or relationship to the district because it's possible that people who live outside the district but who have kids or they're an employee of the district, that they can participate. So, those are the types of parameters I think we really need to try to set around public participation at board meetings. And I'm gonna disagree with a couple of the comments tonight as it relates to fast-tracking. I think we need to set those parameters tonight so that we can continue with public participation at our next board meeting, which I'm assuming will be a virtual board meeting. Now, the idea of commenting on agenda items or non-agenda items, I'll be honest with you, that was a recommendation that came right from WASP. And the reason WASP recommended that was so, they've actually, they've seen communities around the country where people have literally emailed in tongue-twisters, brownie recipes, riddles, poems, songs, things that have nothing to do with the school district. But because you can comment on whatever the heck you want, the guy sitting in this seat has to read it. In fact, one of the examples they gave us was a public meeting in Florida where an ex-husband actually emailed the clerk, who was reading public comment, who was his ex-wife, and was asked to read part of her divorce settlement publicly because it, it was allowed. They could comment on whatever the heck they want. So, I'm not personally in favor of limiting to agenda items only, but I think the language should say something like, your comments need to pertain to business of the school district or topics related to, to the school district. And I think that's broad enough that you can talk about whatever the heck you want as long as it has something to do with our school district. So, I'm gonna leave it there and maybe turn it over to superintendent or any other board members who want to comment on this, and we'll go from there.
I guess, this is Nancy. I just would like to hear from Don. What was the initial intent? Because I believe we've heard a lot of commentary from the public now and I feel it's important to understand what the initial intent was for the change. You know, maybe that will, maybe you're planning to do that already, Mr. Kirkergard, so I'll let you take it away.
Sounds good. Thank you. This is Ms. Kirkergard, and I want to make sure that the public hears and understands this wasn't brought forward by the board or any board member, period. This was Mr. Kirkergard after looking at WASP's recommendations to maybe do some things a little bit different when you're doing a virtual meeting so that you have some kind of parameters involved with public comments. So, first of all, comments tonight that said the board is trying to, to gain, squash public comments, do all those different things, this really did not come from the board at all, not even a little bit. This was from Mr. Kirkergard, superintendent, as well as from WASP. And so, what I would say is that maybe it's a solution looking for a problem because we, we really haven't had a problem. And so, I've been here two years and our public comments have been very, you know, they, sometimes we get a few, sometimes we don't get any, sometimes we've had quite a few. But, but it hasn't been an issue, but they've always had to come to the school board meeting to give those comments. And so, what my initial intent was, that this is gonna be a very short-lived policy, maybe a month, maybe two, but hopefully, we're gonna be back to normal school board meetings real soon, where we're not doing virtual ones. And when we go back to a virtual, a regular school board meeting, we go back to our regular policy. And that wasn't as, as well spelled out as it should have been. And, you know, the board, you obviously have several different decisions to make tonight. You, you can table it, you can leave it exactly the way it is. You can say, you know what, let's see what happens in the next month or two. And if it becomes abusive, then we're gonna maybe do something different and look at it. But at this point in time, we, we really haven't had any issues. And so, it, it really was from WASP. It was designed so that it isn't necessarily just reading letters to the editor at public school board meetings. It, it was designed so that you talk to things that are pertinent to the education of our kids and go from there. Having said that, we know that there have been some excellent comments regarding things that happened in our district that weren't on the agenda, okay? I remember not too many meetings ago, our forensic team talked about forensics and the budgets and, and it wasn't part of the agenda, but it was a good discussion and I'm glad we had it. But they all came to the meeting for that purpose. And so, like I said, maybe it is a solution looking for a problem and we really don't have a problem yet. And maybe it's very premature because I'm hoping soon we will be back to face-to-face meetings. If we go forward with anything tonight, I truly believe that it has to be very time-sensitive and so that you say, as soon as you go back to regular meetings, you go back to your regular policy. And maybe you say, you know what, we're not gonna do any at all for a while. We're gonna see what happens and, and two months from now, if the number of, of letters are out of line and there are really more letters to the editor that need to be read as opposed to topics of discussion that would typically go forward, then maybe we, we look at some things different. But that's, that's your call, but I want the, the public to know that this is not a board-driven recommendation. This was from WASP, which is our Wisconsin Association of School Boards. And Don took it from there and Don, so you know what, if we're gonna do some things, let's keep our, our comments there, but let's just pertain it to the school board, agenda items. But that certainly can be adjusted as well and you give it a little bit more flexibility or you do nothing at all. I don't know if that answered your question, answered it or not, but that truly was my intent in, in the process. It wasn't to, to, to stifle anybody, but just to give a little, little bit of additional guidance rules in a time when we're not running by normal standards. We're, we're, we're not doing what we normally do.
I guess if I could just add to that, I mean, I, I just, I don't believe that we've really ever had a problem yet as far as different, non-school-related or non-district-related topics coming before the board. I, for one, greatly enjoy hearing when students come or if, if members of the public have concerns. I think sometimes it gives us a deeper understanding as elected officials. I guess for me personally, I'm not so sure I see a need to make a change in the policy. I realize there were a lot of comments tonight, but I believe those comments were because they felt they weren't gonna be able to be comments in the future. I, I don't know that we would have had more than a few comments, you know, for this evening. So, I'm personally not in favor of any changes. I don't know that, I don't know that we should make something a problem until it is a problem. So, that, that would be my personal comments.
And I agree, you know, like I said, this is maybe a solution to a problem that doesn't have, it's looking for the problem. We, we really haven't had a problem yet and so that maybe becomes the issue. And before I turn it back over, Tony, I will read, you asked for the, the statement. It says, "Public participation, safer at home restrictions. The public participation portion of this meeting will be completed electronically. A person should email their comments, which must be less than three minutes in length, when read aloud, to school board president Joel Ongert," and that's got his address, "or superintendent Don Kirkergard and his address, "by 3:30 PM, Monday, April 13th. The comments will be read aloud during the school board meeting beginning at 5:30 on the 13th." So, that's, you had asked earlier what the actual verbiage was. That is the verbiage that was posted on the, on the agenda.
Thank you, Don. I didn't catch the part about whether or not it needed to be part of the agenda or not.
It's not on the, it's not. So, that was not included for tonight's comments. So, it doesn't say anything at all about being on the, for tonight's comments. Originally, it did. It was brought to my attention very early Thursday or Friday morning. We changed that early Friday to, to, to the verbiage that you, that I just read you.
Okay, thank, thank you. I, I also would like to weigh in. If, if, I really appreciate community participation. I'll echo what Nancy said. I like it when things are brought to our attention that we might be unaware of. I think community participation is incredibly important and if any changes are going to be made, it's just so that we can have, so that our policy allows for emailing of comments because people aren't able to attend in person because of the situation we're in. So, if we do make any changes tonight, it's only for the intent, in my mind, of allowing people to continue to participate and, and not to stifle opinion. I, I apologize to anyone who thought otherwise. I hope that we can satisfy the public in helping them to understand that we, we don't want to eliminate their free speech and right to say, say what they feel needs to be said. I, I do think it's important that we stick with the scope of the reach of the school board. We don't need recipes or anything like that. There's another place for that. But I do appreciate it when anything relating to the school district that we can assist with is brought to our attention.
So, Joel.
Go ahead, Paul. Sorry.
Joel, this is Paul Fisher. So, if we, we, we don't have to address the, the agenda, non-agenda piece because that is now out of the current draft. But we, we can't table this, can we? Because the current policy still says, or is postured from an in-person meeting coming to the podium and so forth. So, in order to facilitate, per policy, public comments going forwards in subsequent virtual meetings, we do need to adjust the policy to reflect that, whether through normal policy committee or through the fast-track process, depending on our interpretation of 151, correct?
That, that is my interpretation of the policy as it sits right now. And I, I go back to the fact that it says participants must fill out a comment card. Well, obviously, you aren't filling out a comment card if you're sitting at home. You're not gonna be called to the podium to speak. So, in my opinion, I, I, if you open up, I believe it's recommendation for, it's draft two for consideration for the fast-track of this policy in our board, board docs. I, I like the adoption of what's in blue at the bottom, which are the guidelines for virtual board meetings. It outlines you need to email at least two hours ahead of time. I think we need to have that in there because there's gotta be a cutoff. If someone emails me right now, I'm not gonna pull up my email and read it. I think we also need to, to state that, you know, you can't send me a five-page book. You need to kind of keep it to 400 words or 350 words or whatever. So, and I personally, I see what's written in blue as a, as something that can permanently be adopted in our policy. And it also, with Policy 151, fast-track, it says you can fast-track policies that are requiring expedited adoption. I don't think you get any more expedited than this because if we don't do this, in my opinion, we're violating Policy 187 because we're not allowing people up to a podium, we're not allowing them to fill out comment cards and, and so forth.
And, and then we, we do have to hold public or, or suspend public commentary until this could come through the normal policy track of policy committee, multiple reads in, in subsequent board meetings and so forth, correct, Chris?
Not necessarily because Policy 151, it's the formulation and adoption of policies. The fast-track adoption, which was said several times in the, in the employee, or in the, in the community feedback, fast-track adoptions are for when changes in formatting, grammar, or simple correction or textual updates that do not change the effect of the policy as well as for policies requiring expedited adoption.
Okay, and, and in the spirit of maintaining open communication with the community through an alternate medium to walking up to the podium, that's the intent behind fast-tracking this so that we can continue these discussions and, and community feedback in this venue.
I think so. I'd like Chris to weigh in. He's the attorney on board, but I think so.
I agree wholeheartedly with the comments. I think that otherwise, we're left, we're left in a bit of a conundrum because otherwise, technically, tonight, the public comments violated the existing policy because they weren't, they, they weren't done with the comment card. That seems very counterintuitive, especially in these unusual circumstances. And so, I would think just about the only way we can cure that is with expedited, expedited adoption. Otherwise, we have to wait for three board meetings before we could take public comments again. That doesn't seem, that doesn't seem like a correct, a correct result. I'm in favor of the option two document with just a few modifications. If you have that policy in front of you, the blue additions, I talked about the additional guidelines for virtual board meetings. In, I think it is paragraph four, it says, "The board president shall still recite the below statements." And in the second, third, third sub-paragraph, it said, let's see, where is it here? Oh, I'm sorry, the second one. Participants preparing to address the board have emailed me at least two or five times during the start of a meeting on topics only related to items on today's agenda. We'd have to strike that, "only related to items on today's agenda." The second thing that I would ask the board to consider is, just like I was discussing earlier, these emails, I don't want to create a trap for anyone who's reading it that by accident, they misread a word and somehow have, you know, violated someone's rights. I think instead, the emails should be posted rather than read. And here's why. First of all, people can take a look at them in advance of the meeting. It may not be far in advance, but it's in advance of the meeting. And that's something that people can't do today with public comment. But the second thing is, it can be read at someone's leisure during, after the meeting. It forms a part of the record. Most importantly, and I think, Joel, you mentioned it today as well, how do you appropriately read words that are underlined or italicized or there are hyperlinks? I mean, reading the email, for instance, I think it was from Mrs. Wigan about, you know, that contained a hyperlink. How do you read that? That doesn't seem terribly fair. I think, you know, emails are best read in their native formats that people can discern tone there. So, my, my recommendation would be, we go forward with this fast-track adoption because I think it does require expedited approval. Otherwise, we'd have to shut down public comment for several meetings. Doesn't make sense. I'd make the modification to strike "only related to items on today's agenda" and also change it to say, instead of emails to be read by the board president, to say that emails will be posted to the meeting within board docs for the public inspection. But certainly, subject to other board members' opinions. Thank you.
I, I appreciate that, Chris. I especially appreciate how you're so much better at explaining those things than I am. I, I would like to see them posted for the reasons you mentioned, but because some people only watch the stream, I would still like them to be read out loud. I understand the, the, there is a chance, like you said, that something could be read incorrectly or inflection is, is missed or added. But I think just because there are so many people that, that just watch the stream and because we're backing it, we would be backing it up with the posting of it as well. and because we're backing it, we would be backing it up with the posting of it as well. I don't want to eliminate your suggestion. I'd just like to add to it by doing both.
And Tony, I'm open, I'm open to that. I just felt strongly that because of the nature of hyperlinks and bold and underline and such, to make sure that tone is captured correctly, that they should be, they should be recorded. But reading aloud certainly doesn't, certainly doesn't hurt.
Chris, am I right? And Laura's on the line as well, too. But in that paragraph, we're gonna, you're going to recommend that in the blue down below, we're looking to see in paragraph number four, bullet number four, paragraph number two, it says, "Participants desiring to address the board have emailed me at least two hours "prior to the start of the meeting." And then you're going to delete on topics only related to items on today's agenda. That's, that's the recommendation, correct?
Correct. That's my recommendation.
And one other question, and that's, so I don't know for sure. Do you want them posted prior to the meeting or after the meeting? And so I need to make sure that if they're coming in two hours before, will we have time to get them posted on board docs prior to the meeting? Or does it matter within 24 hours of the meeting? And I don't know what the answer is to that. I just, I don't want to say that they're going to be posted prior to the meeting. And if we get a bunch of them right at the last minute and somebody's gone, how does that work? And so I need your clarification on that as well.
Don, I appreciate that. I think with Tony's suggestion that they're read, that they continue to be read aloud, I like the idea of posting them, but not having to necessarily do so before the meeting. If the reading of the email will give the public the gist of the comments, they can always come back and take a look at the, at the emails as they are recorded as part of the record. So I would agree that we could say that they will be posted. We can set a limit of 24 hours, within a reasonable time, something of that sort. I'd be curious what other board members think.
My concern, my concern of posting them in advance would be that there could almost become a sort of conversation or argument happening publicly prior to the meeting. And that's not the intent of the comments. That's not the intent of these meetings. So therefore, I would prefer that they be posted after the meeting as just supporting documents, almost like minutes of the meeting. And therefore, they are read aloud in the same manner that they would be spoken by the author of the email in a live meeting. So to me, that has the same feeling as our, the format that we're used to.
So a couple of additional comments or thoughts here. I know most of the comments, I believe all of the emails today, if not all, maybe, maybe one or two, went to the entire board. I appreciated the idea that the board received those comments so we could read along with Joel as he was reading those or see those. So I guess I would ask for a component that if they are only sent to the board president or only sent to the superintendent, that prior to the meeting, they're sent to the board members. And I don't know, Chris, what, you know, if there's a legal ramification to that or not. So I would leave that to you. I guess the other thought is, obviously, this change in policy is due to, you know, a pandemic, an emergency or whatnot. I mean, do we have to change the entire policy? Or could we not just add some type of, you know, paragraph B? You know, the policy stands as is, right? But in the event of an emergency, or in the event of a pandemic, or I don't, I don't know the proper wording. I guess I would throw that back to Chris or others on the policy committee. This is how we would handle that. I just don't know. I mean, I think the policy is a good one. I just don't know that we need to rewrite the entire policy. Can we not just add section B for, in the event of an emergency, this is what we do?
Nancy, I think that's already taken care of, because it's not eliminating the policy. It just, it just says additional guidelines for virtual board meetings.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yeah. So if it's not a virtual meeting, then you just go back to the policy. Chris, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. I would agree, I'd agree with that. The way I'm interpreting this is, we keep the original policy and we essentially tack on the additional guidelines that apply only for virtual board meetings, which would apply during this time of pandemic.
This is Paul. I would like to make an additional edit in point one under the additional guidelines for virtual board meetings to change the "does not exceed three minutes in length" as read verbally at the, at the end of number one. I would like to put a specific word count in there so that we don't get into debates over so-and-so read, read my email slow and clipped off half of it and so forth. I think if you look up normal reading pace, three minutes is between 300 and 360 words. Do we, do we put it at 350 words? Do we go up to 400 words? The daily newsletter to the editor policy is 300 words. Maybe we are a little more generous than that, but I think that's a lot easier to govern than a specific time limit.
I'm in favor of 400, just to be, just to ensure that people feel heard.
400 is really extending the length, though. 400 is four minutes, four, maybe even five minutes, as opposed to three minutes that we currently have. And I'm not, that's totally up to you, but four minutes, 400 words is, is a significant jump, 25% over 300. And so that, so you, that really does extend it. And that's totally your call as to whether you want it to go four or not.
Okay, I thought Paul said 360 for three minutes. Can you correct me, Paul?
300 to 360 is, is the guideline I found online. I mean, if we said 360 words and let's, let's see again how, you know, somebody come in at 365, we're not going to clip off the last five words. If somebody comes in at 700, that might be a different situation. But again, let's not necessarily build a solution looking for a problem. Let's put some level of guideline out there.
Okay, I'm fine with 350.
Just one more comment that I will make in add is that typically, this does not go into the minutes. So the published minutes that go into the paper will have comments from, we don't, we don't publish, you know, we pay by the word for minutes that are published. So typically, we would not publish this in the minutes. We would put it on our board docs. We would keep that information available, but it would not be a published item. Andy, I see you there. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would confirm that.
Okay, instead of minutes, then, in the minutes, maybe just have a, could there be a line in the community participation section referring to a website or just that they can be made available from the district? I definitely don't want to pay more to publish them in the newspaper.
Alternatively, could they be put on, could they be put somewhere on board docs for public inspection?
That's what we would do. I just, and that's typically what would happen. And that's true when we have presentations from different organizations. We put the presentation online, but it doesn't go to the minutes. It just might make a reference that a president, presentation, you know, C.G. Schmidt was made, or president, but it doesn't show their entire presentation. It just makes reference. And that's what we would do with this as well. But would keep the, the letters in board docs. And then hoping that by May, this is a mute topic, or June, we're talking, we're spending time that needs to happen right now, and it's important to happen right now, because we want to have public input, but we're hoping that we get back to normal as quickly as we can.
Another consideration, I try, I think when we drafted this language, I was trying to make things as simple as possible. You can find, if the board president's email is linked, I'm just trying to be as clean as we can. I mean, if you wanted to take technology just another step further, we could potentially set up a Google form, link it onto the board's website. All of those could be documented. You could have a narrative area where you could actually put in an area where they could, you can literally limit the number of characters that individuals have in that. And then that, that would solve the problem of the 300, 360, 400, whatever is used. So I mean, we could do something like that. It documents all of those, and they could be accessible for public view. We could do something like that as well. It would document when it was submitted. You know, there's some different things, but it's just a simple Google survey. Just for consideration, I know that, again, to be able to allow this to happen if future meetings action should take place tonight.
Andy, I think we could easily do that. Nancy is correct in that the vast majority of the comments tonight were pertaining to this particular topic. We might not have had any comments at all had we not, had I not put this one on to figure out how we're going to solve the problem that wasn't a problem. And so that, you know, I think we can do what we need to do, see what happens in the next month or two, and if, if we need to tweak it again, we'll tweak it again.
This is Kurt weighing in on, I just have two comments. One, I just want to say, listening to everyone talk, and if individuals that had comments there, I'm disappointed in your tone of the comments, and I'm disappointed in your trust of superintendent and the board. We've always listened to, we've always appreciated comments and been open to receiving emails and letters and comments. And as you can see, this is not the attempt, this was not a well to stifle any comments. So a lot of those perceptions that I was listening to when Joel read through those are just completely not as what's happening here. So that's my one comment on the disappointed in tone and trust. On the second comment, I would leave the policy alone completely. Since we're dealing with another meeting or two, we can have this come back, would be my vote. And, and leave it alone completely. And once we have, if we have another virtual meeting, at that time, we can bring it up in another meeting or two. Those are just my two comments.
Kurt, we have a meeting scheduled for April 27th. I believe originally, we were looking at it as a meeting, a committee of the whole. Might not be a committee of the whole based on, I don't know if you'll have a superintendent contract, if you'll have some action items that may need to take place on that 27th. If you don't do something now, you, you're either not have comments on the 27th or you'll need to take comments, just like we did tonight, which might be out of, in violation to what our policy says they should be, because they're not in, face to face, there's no comment cards, there's no whatever. There's not an opportunity for them to come and speak. Unless they come in, and I'm in the building right now, they could come in and talk to the microphone, even though nobody's at the, at the building. We could set that up as well. So I don't know if you can put off for too long, because we will have some meetings in more than likely the 27th. Even if our May meeting can go back to face to face, more than likely, the 27th will not.
Chris, I guess I'm kind of looking at you here. If you feel like we're prepared to make a motion on this, I know there were some changes made. Do you want to help me make that motion, if you're willing to do it?
I am. I'm looking to, I'm looking to see if we can recap it. I mean, my, my thought is that we leave the policy, we start by leaving the policy the way it is and just adding language. What we would add is, the additional guidelines for the virtual board meeting section is contained, starting with, as it's been contained in, in the second version of the document. Trying to see what it's titled here on board docs. Let's see, draft two. So we start with draft two. We leave the language of the policy as it is, but add the section on additional guidelines for virtual board meetings. Kurt, I acknowledge your, your thoughts about leaving the whole thing alone. My, my point in making this motion would be to give permission for people to send an email comment so we don't have to shut it, we don't have to shut down public comments in the meantime. So anyway, adding additional guidelines for virtual board meetings. However, striking in paragraph four, the comment "on topics only related to items on today's agenda." My, my thought, you know, with regard to the, the 300 word thing, I think perhaps that's an enhancement that we make in the future when we have a little bit more time to deal with this, hopefully after the, after the COVID-19 situation resolves. Because I think this is something that, because of a snowstorm, we may use in the future. And so we should come back, we should come back to that idea. But I think the simpler that we can keep it moving forward, the better off we are. So other thoughts, and then if, if people are agreeable, I'd be prepared to make that a motion.
Sounds good to me.
All right. Well, then I will make, I will make a motion to fast-track amend policy 187, keeping all existing language, but adding the section "is contained in draft two," titled "Additional Guidelines for Virtual Board Meetings." However, striking the words "on topics only related to items on today's agenda."
I'll second. This is Joel. Motion by, by Chris, and a second by myself. Any more comments, discussion, questions on this?
No.
If not, just go ahead and unmute your mics. I'm going to do a quick roll call vote. I am a yes. Mr. Repholz?
I'm a no.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
And I believe I've called everybody. That motion passes six to one. We'll move on to our consent agenda tonight. On our consent agenda is minutes of the March 9, 2020 regular board meeting, minutes of the March 18, 2020 special board meeting, dispersments posted to April 13, 2020, revenues and expenses in the aggregate July 2019 to February 2020, resignations, retirements, and approval of the early college credit and Start College Now classes.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second that. Again, motion and a second. Any questions, comments on the consent agenda? I am a yes. Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Repholz?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger?
Yes.
Motion carries. Our first action item tonight, or technically, second action item tonight, is our employee compensation during school closure. And I am not sure who's going to lead us through that, if it's Mr. Sarno or Mr. Kirkergard, but I'll turn it over to one of you.
So this is Ms. Kirkard, and I will address that. And so on March 18th, the board approved AINs salaries up through tonight, okay? We didn't know for sure what was going to happen. We are still in closure up through, no earlier than April 24th is the earliest we will get back. I don't know what will happen in the next week or so with the governor. But at this point in time, we're scheduled to get back to school on the 24th. We looked at our current system. Teachers, administrators, salary support staff, all have current contracts. And so we would recommend that they continue to be paid as is under their contracts. Hourly paid support staff, we would continue to pay that group as well. Some of them are working 20 hours, 30 hours, 40 hours. Some of them working from home, some of them are working in school. But we would continue to pay that group as well. The question is with our coaches. We have coaches that started the season and haven't coached since. We also have not officially canceled any of the seasons based on WIA cancellations. There might be, parts of the season have been canceled, but WIA, at least at this point in time, said they're not going to cancel sports until after the state makes decisions as to what it may or may not do. So is there a probability that there's going to be a baseball season? I don't think so, but it hasn't been officially canceled yet. And so we had looked at a couple of different things. We'd also looked at the possibility of things. We'd also looked at the possibility of some unemployment that would be going out if we didn't pay our coaches. And so we're recommending that coaches be paid as well. And then the last one would be seasonal employees. We hire quite a few people to come and help us do things in the spring, college kids to come and help mow lawns, to do whatever. We're more than likely not going to hire any seasonal employees. If we do, we'll pay them when we hire them, but would not pay them because they haven't been hired as of yet. And so recommendation from Don would be to continue to pay teachers, administrators, salary support staff, hourly support staff, and coaches through the remainder of the school year and/or their season. And so sometimes it'll be before the school year's over, sometimes it's after the school year, the season continues to go on, maybe a week after, after school's over for a track coach or whatever it might be. So that's where we're at, and we'll gladly take any questions you might have.
Hi, Don. This is Erin. I guess I was just wondering about the support staff. Are most of them having opportunities to engage with students or assist teachers in distance learning?
You know, and Lenny, Laura, I know that you're both on. I'm going to refer that to you. I know that we do have some support staff that are working on a regular basis, working with kids. Some of them are not necessarily working with kids, but doing other things. Some of them are more limited and are not doing as much. So Laura, Lenny, help me out.
That's a, a good summary, Don. Based on position, based on role, and the work that they were doing at the time of the closure of our schools, that has kind of determined what they've been doing. And we've also looked at some potential opportunities for them to engage in some virtual professional learning related to their role. And, but yeah, Don said it very, very well.
Okay. Thank you.
Don, this is Paul, and Andy as well. What is the payroll cadence specifically for our coaches? My concern is that, my frustration honestly, is the WIA has not weighed in at this point. I frankly see it hard to, to believe that we would have a month of any spring season in the month of May, if we're, if we're able to get back in the buildings. And my concern is, I certainly don't want to be punitive, but if we, if we approve your recommendations tonight, and WIA comes out tomorrow and says, season's done, you know, we're, we're committed at that point. And I just, I'm concerned about the money. Yes, the, the funds are there, but I'm, I'm not about spending silly money. I'm also not trying to be punitive. I recognize the investment that our coaches make in, in our athletes, and in their programs, and how this comes back in the community. But at the same time, I'm looking for some level of, of coverage that, that we make a decision tonight and does WIA do something tomorrow that, that completely goes against what we just endorsed.
You know, one of the things you could look at is for the coaches. And the rest are more easier. The coaches was by far the most difficult decision we, we looked at. Okay? And so we've been around the board a couple of different times on whether we should or shouldn't be paying coaches. You know, one of the things we could say is we could, we could continue to pay coaches until the seasons have been officially canceled, or their season has been canceled. Everybody was paid at least 50% of the season. So, so if, if it hasn't been canceled yet, we'll continue to pay them, but nobody will receive less than 50% of the coach's salary. And so Lenny and Andy, can you help me out a little bit on that one?
So the, one of the challenges was that some coaches had started working, some had not. Some had put in the work that goes in preparing for the season right before kids arrive. So you know, the, the reality is that the seasons for spring don't all start simultaneously. So some coaches genuinely completed work and need to be compensated for that no matter what. So that, we rolled them into the board action from March 18th at that point, because it was kind of all over the map. Now, obviously, we know where we're at at this point, and that's where, you know, you, the board has to consider kind of the, the final decision. But the truth is not, you know, there's an assumption out there that some people think coaches did absolutely nothing for spring, and that's not true for a good number of them.
And the other part, Paul, and you're right, I'm disappointed with WIA. I asked that question last week. I do not believe that they have made any recommendation decision at this point in time. And so unless the governor comes out in the next week or so, we might have them back to work, and we might have even no coaches. And I, you know, I'm going to talk a little bit about what happens if the governor doesn't give us a statewide directive a little bit later on. But, but at this point in time, they're still potentially looking to coach yet this spring. I agree with you. I don't think that's going to happen, but it might. We had, and Andy, you can help us out. I know we had quite a few early requests for unemployment based on coaching. Okay? And so they were denied because we haven't stopped paying our coaches. One of the gentlemen tonight said that coaches aren't eligible for unemployment because of the length of their service. I don't know if that's accurate or not. I don't know what the scenario is, but I do know we had quite a few potential unemployment claims for coaches. We, we said no to all of them because we hadn't, hadn't taken them off the payroll yet. Andy, what's the coach?
That, that is accurate. So we did have some unemployment requests by some coaches. And keeping in mind, a typical coach, like it was 20, 30, 40 years ago, is not always a district employee. It's not the teacher or the, the custodian or whatnot. They met quite often now, these are people, they might be an engineer at a firm down the street, and they just really like coaching and being engaged with the students in that manner. So again, going back to one of the foundational pieces that was kind of shared both with the federal as well as the state government, is they said, do what you can to minimize that unemployment. We believe that there's a case where if somebody was not paid, a coach was not paid for even half of their season, they could potentially qualify for unemployment of some level. It may be minimal, but again, it's, 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 it's in relation to trying, trying to keep people whole per the government's request.
Could you, I have a clarifying question, Andy. Are you saying that, say, this in this hypothetical situation, this engineer who works down the road, if he lost his, or she lost their job, or were furloughed, would that, if they are a coach and are still on her payroll, would that prevent them from filing for unemployment?
Yeah. So unemployed, great question. Unemployment's an interesting kind of nebulous, is that that, if that coach, who's the engineer down the street, was furloughed through their engineering firm, it is potential the district even has a little bit of liability there. If the coach, who we were, we told would not be eligible for the second half of the spring season, we, we could potentially, and we believe we would be, we could potentially be on the hook for unemployment. Their engineering firm may also be responsible for some unemployment. Again, so employment is actually kind of linked, in some manner of speaking. Somebody could have resigned a position in the last six months, started with another organization, and the previous employer could still be responsible for that. So there's a lot of different scenarios. We are trying to sort through them. That's why we're making a lot of these decisions and recommendations to say, how can we minimize unemployment for district employees? So, yeah.
We have quite a few business people on that are way more knowledgeable than I am. But I believe, Tony, that if someone was let go as an engineer downtown, or wherever, or, and they were still getting a nominal amount of money from our coaching part, they would not be excluded from unemployment. But you have to report the amount of money that you're getting from the school for that. And so you make X amount over here, you make a nominal amount over on this side, you still have to report that nominal amount. They might subtract some of that from your total unemployment check. But, but I don't believe, and I, you guys know that way more than I do, I do not believe that our $1,000 junior high track stipend would prevent a person from getting unemployment if they were let go from their full-time job. I don't.
And, and just to be, just to clarify for anybody, it's not the current employer that pays the unemployment, it's the previous employer that does, just like Andy mentioned. It's, the employer pays unemployment insurance, basically. And, but it's the previous employer that pays when someone files for unemployment.
Yeah. Private sector versus public sector is a little bit different. We actually pay unemployment when we have a true claim. So we don't pay a monthly or weekly amount in, almost like a, like, like you would in a, in a private sector, where you constantly pay in. If you have claims on that in the public sector, or excuse me, private sector, then your rate might go up a little bit to reflect that and whatnot. But we pay as we incur those claims.
Okay.
Just an interesting anomaly.
Hey, Andy, it's Erin. I have a question. Is it a possibility then, if we don't pay the coaches, and then they file for unemployment, that we could actually be more expensive to the, to the community and the taxpayers?
Well, we haven't been able to determine that. That's a great question. We haven't been able to determine that. Our coaches, and here's, here's why. Our coaches seen as being seasonal, yes or no, and that's really dependent on a lot of different factors. Would they qualify not for, just for the state unemployment? Again, very, maybe very minimal, because let's just say you have a $1,500 spring assistant coach, and they, they're, they've received payment for half of the season, and we say we're stopping it. So that leaves $750 on the table. Could they qualify for unemployment? We believe so, maybe. Not just the state, but the, the federal stimulus, that up to $600, which is actually stacked on top of the Wisconsin unemployment. So I, and again, I don't know if a $750 coaching stipend would allow for both state, as well as that stacking of the federal stimulus. We don't know that yet, but that's what we're trying to look into and have an answer. We believe that it could, both. Maybe not the, you know, obviously not the full Wisconsin. I think it's $377 or something like that, close to that per week. And then $600 per week from the federal stimulus, not full amounts for both. But yeah, I mean, they, they would, we believe they would be eligible for minimal amounts on both, for quite a period of time.
Andy, this is Paul. In addition to, on, on the savings side, we've talked about, you know, not running buses, bringing students to the buildings during this time. And obviously, we're not running buses to take athletes to away events. Is that a, is that a 100% savings on that portion of the transportation expense, or is that included in the 60% responsibility of the district in times like this?
Yeah. Great. Another good question. The 60% with Johnson Bus, and I have had follow-up discussions with them since April, or actually dating back to the original board meeting towards the end of March. That's only on the original to and from school. So with these co-curricular events, that's 100% savings. We do not pay a 60% amount for those trips. So that, that's $0 that we're incurring at this point in time on those, those co-curricular events.
Okay. Thank you.
Same with referees. You know, there, there's no referee costs or anything like that. Where we've halted spending on, on just daily expenditures. So, you know, the, the hurdle replacement that might take place right now, we're not buying hurdles this year. Replacement of other supplies, equipment and whatnot, we're just at a standstill. We have a spending freeze that's been enacted. Both, I think it's the responsible thing to do as well. Our auditors have basically told us that anything that we purchase at this point in time, that's really for students, but that can't be used on students, that has a risk of being moved to the next fiscal year, because they truly can't use them. As opposed to an online instructional thing that we are using right now, that we would purchase in current expense, that is legitimate. But if students can't use hurdles, they can't use hurdles that should not belong in the fiscal year, current fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry, Kurt.
No, I'll just make one comment on the coaches. I'm in favor of just paying them either 50% or 75%. And whatever money we're saving on busing and coaching, to invest in student safety. I know it's a secondary topic, I won't, but my secondary comment is any money we're saving, there's a long list of student safety concerns at facilities. And with the distant learning, I would imagine a, a long list of distant learning capabilities for the coming years we could have. So any savings, like I said, in coaching, if they're not working, and it, they might not work the whole year, any savings that could be done there to be altered for other needs.
I agree with paying them 50%.
Okay. Any more comments on this? If not, I will entertain a motion.
So, Tony, just to go back to, to whatever the motion is, if we agree to the, if you want to go 50%, then what we're, in essence, is saying, we're not going to pay coaches for the second half of the season, because we've already paid them the first. And so whatever we decide on that, if you go 75%, we're going to pay them a little bit more. If seasons come back, we'll have to figure out what the process is. But if we stay with the 50%, then that's pretty much their current compensation. Some of them might get a little bit more, but for the most part, they will have already received that 50% or pretty close to it.
Don, you bring up a good point. We do have a Thursday payroll this week. That's, I think it's pretty well set in stone right now. It is highly possible, just slightly. There's some spring co-curriculars, some spring coaches that could get paid slightly more, just based on when their season began. So it would be difficult at this point in time to stop that payroll on Thursday. So just, just making sure everybody's aware of that.
So if you, if, before the motion goes forward, what would recommend that if you are going to, if we're going to cut the coaching part out, we would say, we're going to pay coaches up through Thursday payroll with no less than 50% compensation. So on Thursday, somebody got 54% based on the number of checks they've already received, we're not going to go back and try to, to collect that extra 4%. We're going to pay them through Thursday. And if somebody is only at 42% as of Thursday, because their season goes a little bit later on, we'll still try to make him or her full up to 50%. So whatever, whatever you decide, but, but Andy needs to have that flexibility on. Some might be a little bit over 50% if that's what we choose.
So the, the document as listed in Board Docs, that is through Thursday. So if we're approving, I guess, could you clarify, could you clarify that for me?
What you would do is you would motion to approve the document with the change that coaches receive this Thursday, April 16th payroll, and receive no less than 50% of their salary for the season.
Okay.
And is it realistic to say that if we go back into the buildings, April 24th, and if WIA says the month of May and half of June, whatever, the spring season is going forward with the time that we have, can this board then take follow-on action specific to the coaches to make them whole?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I can try and type a motion here in the chat box if, if that helps.
Paul, and, and there's, we, we believe we'd be on solid foundation as well, where even though people were already receiving compensation, they still have duties that would need to be completed for the season. So hey, that was already received would be for that time spent in May or even into June, that would typically be outside of the, the normal season.
Yeah. We know that our coaches are committed well beyond the, the hours that are compensated based on, you know, Yeah, we we know that our coaches are committed well beyond the the hours that are compensated based on, you know, um affinity for the sport, affinity for the athletes and so forth. And and I'm I'm really torn on this uh from the standpoint of um yeah, again, as you said, Andy, you know, the guidance from the government making people whole, and we know that that money winds up, uh, you know, at Pick and Save, at Meyer, at the Norbert, et cetera. Um, but at the same time, um, we 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 need to look at the bigger picture. Okay, good discussion. Any uh I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to read a motion. And um, Mr. Hanson did put a uh sample motion in the comments.
I'll read the motion. Thank you, Lenny. Uh, motion to approve the spring twenty twenty COVID nineteen school closure compensation proposal with the edit that coaches will receive their full paycheck this Thursday, April sixteenth, and receive no less than fifty percent of their coach salary for the twenty twenty spring athletic season.
I'll second. Erin?
Motion by Ms. Schmidt, second by Ms. Dove. Any more questions, comments, discussion on this? If you can unmute your mic. Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yeah.
Ms. Justin?
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Swiger?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Motion carries. Our next action item tonight is a recommendation for approval of a contract with a health clinic provider.
So um, I'm gonna reference the presentation, which is just four slides. Um, that's in Board Docs. But as a brief summary, um, in twenty thirteen, the district opened an onsite health clinic um with a vendor that provides those services. That vendor is um Healthstat. We've been with them ever since twenty thirteen. Um, we have spent some time over the past year really analyzing kind of a cost benefit analysis of of the clinic and its impact on the district. Um, employees will tell you that they love having access to um the clinic services. Um, but our question was deeper in that, are we getting the best costs um return on our investment from this particular vendor? So the district is committed to continuing a uh workplace clinic offering. We think there are benefits, but we wanted to dig in deeper. So um, on that second slide there, it talks about, you know, there has not been another request for proposal since the initial opening in two thousand thirteen. We've simply renewed the contract each year with the clinic provider. Um, and that on top of our um kind of cost benefit analysis that we've done, really led us to say, you know, it's really time, maybe past time for the district to go out for a request for proposal and see what is available out there. Um, we were looking for a number of things. We're looking obviously for cost effectiveness, um accessibility and scheduling flexibility. We looked at clinics that could offer both onsite services like we currently have as well as near-site services. Um, we looked at a variety of types of vendors. So Healthstat is a clinic-only type company. Um, we also looked at local um physician groups, the kind of a smaller business model there. And then we also looked at the large hospital groups as well as um, you know, kind of um uh, tho- those were the primary areas that that we looked. So really a lot of ways to deliver it. And then we also wanted um an ability for whoever we go with to be able to integrate with our wellness program. We've had a wellness program since uh two thousand fourteen, I believe. And uh really what it involves is it's a coaching model where our employees make visits with um at the clinic. Um, yeah, dependent on how they perform on a health screening at the start of the wellness year. And those coaching visits are obviously designed to help um our employees meet their health goals, which has the benefit both for the employee of their personal health and well-being and the benefit of the district and the employee in uh uh leading to lower, hopefully lower claims costs on insurance. So we went out for that um proposal, came back with um a number of of options. And uh we are recommending that we change providers to Freiter Workforce Health um starting July first, um, which is at the start of the new fiscal year. It just happens to align perfectly with that timeline. Um, this uh would be delivered in a little bit different way than we currently have our clinic services provided. Um, we were looking at the possible advantages of a clinic being provided off-site but near the district office prior to the entire coronavirus outbreak. Um, you know, there's some uh some over um oversight that we have to provide, having an onsite clinic. There's building accessibility here at the ESC that has to be maintained. There's certain, um, you're always kind of walking a tight line in terms of medical privacy because we want to monitor all our guests coming into the building. But at the same time, you can't violate HIPAA law by asking people who are coming for a clinic why they're here. So we were already looking at some reasons why we might um consider an off-site or near-site clinic. The COVID nineteen outbreak has really accentuated that, um, because we've been very concerned. We have um that employees wouldn't be able to access the clinic if we have to close this building. And access really became a concern. On top of that, we don't want, nor does Healthstat, our current clinic vendor, want a lot of sick people coming in here when they could be possibly infected with coronavirus. So that has led us to really minimize the types of services that the clinic's been providing over the past month. Um, so the option to hold a clinic at an actual medical facility um really became even more advantageous in light of uh COVID nineteen outbreak. So what we're proposing and what Freiter has put out there for us is in their brand-new um facility across from Walmart on Paradise um Drive, they would have the Westman School District Workplace Clinic in that facility. Um, and our employees kind of have a separate area that they go to when they enter that building, a separate waiting area and check-in area and separate rooms um that they are served in. Um, that obviously, that that facility is outfitted to handle whatever comes their way, being a hospital group facility. Um, the, you know, the 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 big price tag benefit here is when comparing the bids, we can save roughly five hundred thousand dollars a year by making this change. Now, it's not just a money decision, but that's a pretty big um impact. At the same time, we actually get a uh, we think a better flexibility in hours. We'll be able to open the clinic earlier in the morning, which really works to the benefit of our high school and middle school employees who start earlier. Um, on top of that, their integration with wellness programming, as it says in the presentation, is really outstanding and frees up some of our clinic appointment time. Um, what they'll do is they'll continue to do our annual health appraisal that all of our employees come to. Um, right now, what happens is in August, the employees come with their spouses if they're on our insurance plan. They get a couple of vials of blood drawn. A few weeks later, they get a letter with um results. And that tells them how many visits they need to make to the clinic. Well, what we're gonna, what this allows us to shift to is um just a finger stick test. They get instant results, instant coaching onsite. And then the health coaching after that can be provided either at the actual school site or even telephonically. So creates a lot of um advantages for the employee in terms of convenience. Um, so there's a number of benefits here. You know, we've we've had good service from our providers down at the clinic. This isn't about, you know, having poor service from the actual physician station and nurse practitioner. Um, but I think the availability, accessibility and cost uh make this a uh very uh easy recommendation for us to give you.
Uh, Mr. Andre, I uh think it's important for me to disclose the fact that I serve on various committees of the Freiter Health System. I'm an unpaid volunteer member, but to be safe and to avoid the appearance of any impropriety, I'm going to not participate in this discussion and will abstain, and I would hope the minutes would so reflect.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Hanson, thank you for that presentation. I know that uh this has taken a lot of time from um the superintendent and yourself and uh Andy Sarno, our finance uh director, to take a look at our clinic and uh figure out how to enhance it or save costs or, you know, simply do something different. And um, w- we had the idea of taking board members on a tour of this new Freiter uh facility and unfortunately um had to cancel those plans because of of the COVID nineteen stay-at-home um um order by the governor. But um I personally had an opportunity to go into the building um as it was being built. A friend of mine actually helped build the building, and it is gorgeous. And I think our staff will really enjoy uh using that clinic and the services that uh that Lenny just outlined. I think will really go over well with our staff. And then financially, I mean, heck, a five hundred thousand dollar annual cost savings, I think, is a no-brainer. So uh, good work to the team on this one.
I I agree with Joel. Uh, thank you, Lenny, for uh putting putting this together. I I think an added bonus that we could not have foreseen but is very evident now is that um with this relationship with the Freiter Clinic, uh, I anticipate that they will be using more technology to support additional virtual pace patient visits and will be able to take advantage of that as well in addition to the cost savings. So I see that as well as um increased visiting hours for families of our uh employees. I I think that's fantastic all around. In fact, I wish I could think of a bad reason to support this, but I'm, this is excellent. Thank you. You've knocked it out of the park.
Yeah, Freiter was one of the leaders in terms of telemedicine as the coronavirus um uh outbreak began and actually opened up their telemedicine for free uh shortly after, which promoted to our employees as well. Um, you know, when we did our cost benefit analysis, at this price, we truly save money every time we get a visit in the clinic versus someone going to their general practitioner or family doctor. Um, so it's a win for both sides. The employee gets a free clinic they can go to, and that visit is truly cheaper than going in the regular marketplace.
This is Paul. Um, well done uh for all the the reasons already cited. And uh I especially like uh that we are not in the business of housing this. Um, Lenny, your your comments about uh, you know, the confidentiality but yet needing to secure ESC. Uh, and as we look at our facility's needs and potentially moving certain facets of our operation, um, this is moving now and it's moving to the right place. And we don't need to worry about accommodating this going forwards uh with whatever we do with central office. So um, home run on this one. Thank you. I move to approve the change to Freiter Workforce Health as the district's health clinic vendor.
Second.
That's a motion by uh myself and Mr. Second by Mr. Fisher. Any more comments, questions, discussion? I will call the roll. Fisher.
Sorry, was that me, Joel? You broke up.
Yep, Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Swiger?
I abstain.
Ms. Justin?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Motion carries. All right, we will move on to our Head Start refunding application.
All right. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Emily. We can see and hear you loud and clear.
Awesome. I'm gonna introduce myself on behalf of the community, just so folks know who I am speaking to them. I'm Emily Melstrand. I am the principal of early learning and I'm also the Head Start Director. I have actually four items that I'm bringing to the board tonight. And I'm gonna do my best to kind of work through those um pretty efficiently and and yet give you an opportunity to ask any questions or or provide any comments that you might have. So the first item that I have for you tonight is the Head Start refunding application. And um as as you know, based upon the information that Matt Durant and I shared out in March, um, we just completed our community and self-assessment. And the community and self-assessment really drives this process of re- of creating a refunding application for Washington County Head Start. It's a five-year cycle, which means that the grant kind of carries itself through a five-year period. But within that five-year period, we are required on an annual basis to complete a refunding application. And as a part of that, we review our goals. Um, we examine the community and self-assessment results. And then we put all of that together and kind of formulate all of the different components of the grant application. And so in your executive summary, I tried to just kind of highlight the different components and any significant changes within those. Um, and those changes were really minimal. Um, one of the things that I I want to highlight is our program goals are staying relatively consistent. Some of the action plans that lead into those goals will be changing. Probably the most um overt change relates to the fact that we are adopting that data and action model within our Head Start program to use as our continuous improvement model. Um, and then a- aside from that, the goals are really staying relatively stable. Our service delivery and program options are re- are re- are going to stay pretty consistent um as they did in the past year. The one thing that we are looking at is we're moving to a broader range of options for our four-year-olds. So as you know, we serve kids at the Rolfs Education Center. And then we also have Head Start programming offered at the YMCA and the Jackson Community Center. And one of the things that came out of our self-assessment was really the importance of offering families kind of a range of options. Um, and so prior to this year, all of our four-year-olds were involved in four-year-old full-day programming if they were a Head Start student. And going into next year, within our application, we are asking um for increased opportunity to expand that. So families would have the option of a half-day, an extended day at the Jackson Community Center that really is about a three-quarters of a day length, and then the full-day option at the YMCA. Uh, in regards to the budget, the budget is staying pretty stable as well. Um, one of the things that I did want to highlight that recently was released from the federal government is they're actually offering a quality improvement grant. And initially, we thought it was going to be a competitive grant, but the information that I received in the past two weeks indicates it's a non-competitive grant. But we do have to complete an application in order to receive those funds. And that would be additional money allocated to the Head Start program with the intent that it really supports the development of social emotional skills in young children. Um, particularly in relationship to children who've experienced some type of developmental trauma or traumatic experiences in their um their lifetime. So that's kind of a summary. Um, this is a little bit of a different format. I'm used to having a uh uh presentation to share with you, but I did want to give you an opportunity to ask any questions or provide any feedback about that prior to um requesting that you approve the Head Start refunding application for the two thousand twenty twenty-one school year.
Great. Thank you for that, Emily. Any any questions? If not, I move uh to approve the Head Start refunding application for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year.
I second that.
Motion by uh myself and a second by Mr. Redholtz. Any more questions, comments, discussion? I am a yes. Mr. Swiger?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz?
Yes.
Ms. Justin?
Yes.
Ms. Dove?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries. Our next action item tonight is Head Start eligibility criteria.
All right. So this is actually um pretty quick and easy. Uh, again, you have an exact summary that describes our Head Start selection criteria. And basically, it indicates that we have a process for, it's kind of like a matrix where we're able to rank order um students as they enroll into our program to ensure that we are serving the students with the greatest need. Head Start performance standards indicate that there are certain automatic um automatic factors that allow kids access to Head Start. So for example, income eligibility is the number one piece. If families are income eligible, they're automatically placed in a Head Start classroom. If the family receives public assistance through TANF, they're automatically enrolled in our program. Being in a foster care situation or being considered homeless is also an absolute um um prioritization for for Head Start. But then after that, we really need to look at, you know, what are the factors that would allow students access to Head Start? And so our Head Start selection criteria really works through that. Um, we assign points for specific through that um we assign points for specific circumstances in which children live in and then we rank order our students and bring them into our program based upon their priority and some of the factors that we consider are things like um you know is the parent a teen parent how many children are in the family is it a single parent family um has is it a child who's experienced trauma and then we also prioritize like an active military um parent um so all of that's listed in the selection criteria are there any questions or comments about that and really are as I said it earlier our goal is really that we are serving the families in our community who have the greatest need and there are no changes from previous years.
Great thank you for that any questions on this for Emily? If not I will move to approve the head start criteria.
Second from Paul Fisher.
Second from Paul Fisher uh any questions comments discussion on this? Let's start with the ladies Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
And I'm a yes motion carries our next action item tonight is our head start bus monitor waiver.
All right so that's me again and I wanna thank everybody for your patience and working through these individually um this exact summary really describes our or or asks for makes a request that we are able to waive a bus monitor requirement um that is part of a head start performance standard so one of the head start performance standards really stipulates that all head start buses need to have a full time bus monitor onboard um while transporting children and what we have presented the last couple of years and and the policy that we've worked under or the practice that we've worked under is kind of aligning what we're doing in head start with the rest of the West Bend School District um and knowing that if we were to put bus monitors on every single bus that our budget in head start is fixed so we're ultimately gonna be um replacing some of the dollars that are allocated towards employees working in classrooms with kids um towards bus monitors so what we're actually asking is for the flexibility to make decisions about bus monitors uh based upon the needs of kids and we have utilized bus monitors um particularly when we have routes that are very long or when we have children who are struggling to demonstrate safe behaviors on the bus we will um allocate resources to that but we're really asking for the flexibility to do that by waiving the requirement for a bus monitor um and then providing us the opportunity to make decisions based upon student needs any questions or comments about that?
I move to approve the head start bus monitor waiver.
I'll second that's Erin.
Second we're Erin Dove any more questions comments discussion on this one? Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
And I'm a yes motion carries and our last one for head start training and technical assistance plan.
All right um so this is actually deeply tied to the refunding application the training and technical assistance plan is a requirement of the head start performance standards and it's really um the requirement that we create a professional development plan that supports staff in moving forward to meet our designated program goals so um our the the refunding application in combination with this training and technical assistance plan really kind of makes up our strategic plan or our logic model for head start and I think I mentioned this in March that one of our goals is really to align our head start strategic plan with our strategic plan for early learning within the West Bend School District so this plan really just describes what each of our employee groups requires in terms of professional development in order to support children and and our program in meeting our program goals and then it also delineates the professional development and support needs of our new teachers so obviously what you need is a year one two or three teacher might look different than our veteran teachers so the plan really delineates across employee group and then looks at you know our new beginning teachers um as needing something in addition or different than our more veteran teachers and then I identified within the exact summary um the areas of focus and those are really the same areas of focus that align to our program goals any questions or comments in regard to our training in a technical assistance plan?
Emily any any changes on this plan relative to prior years?
Um you know I I think one of the biggest changes in this particular year is that I did differentiate the year one two and three teachers that that isn't something that we included in the technical training and technical assistance plan in past years and I thought that that was really important that we delineated the fact that those teachers do require some different kinds of professional development and then the other thing that um we have identified as kind of a excuse me reemerging area of need is just more intensive focus on making our early learning practices very trauma sensitive and that was something that came out of our self assessment just the need to really be responsive not just to our students but to their families and some of the trauma that they have experienced and actually we've been talking about that specifically in relationship to the pandemic and the fact that we're gonna have little kids who come back to school um whenever we come back to school and have potentially experienced some additional trauma because of this situation whether it's sick family members um you know stress within families all of those sorts of things so this to me has even made that need more relevant as we go into the next calendar year.
Great thank you.
Okay thanks Paul.
Paul you wanna make a motion on this one?
Sure I move to approve the head start technical assistance and training plan.
Second. Uh we'll give that second to uh Mr. Dwyer how about that motion and a second um any more questions comments discussion? Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
And I am a yes motion carries.
Awesome thank you all very much.
And have a great evening thanks for being online with us today.
Yeah thank you.
Our next action item is a recommendation for approval of a primary resource for physical science.
Thank you everyone um if you recall when we were reviewing the biology textbook we spoke about um the company having a comparable textbook uh uh for physical science that had aligned really well uh we had some of our teachers examining it at since that meeting several other teachers have examined the physical science textbook physical science is new to our high schools next year and that new course was approved by the school board last school year for implementation in 2020 to 2021 school year the textbook would be of the same layout of the same uh quality the same kinds of assessment information the students would have familiarity with the platform that it is on as they transition from physical science to biology in the future um additionally in the executive summary you saw linked to that the teacher rating as well as uh the budget of the expenditures uh for this textbook physical science is not a required course for graduation so it's not one that is taken by every student are there questions um the board has?
So I have a question Laura so since this is a ninth grade class does would freshmen take it as well as other uh potential high school students?
Yes so when we're like four years down the road it's probably mostly freshmen right now as the course is newly offered and there are students who maybe need their third science credit in order to graduate or who want to put off chemistry for another year we may have some sophomores and some older students in it next year uh it there's nothing we're we're not ruling out the opportunity for older students to take it down the road it'll probably be mostly freshmen.
How many just the one or two more how many teachers would teach this class at the high school?
Yep based on the number of sections that we have we would have um two uh up to four teachers but that includes um teachers who are co teaching sections in some of our science classes we have a regular education teacher and a special education teacher co teaching so when I say four teachers two of them are would be regular ed and two would be special education.
And have every teacher that would be teaching this seen the textbook and approve of this?
Uh I you know I don't every teacher in the science department had the opportunity to I don't recall if the special education teachers reviewed it or not.
Hi Laura um I'm I like this course I'm in favor of this course I think it it gives more kids a chance um to learn about uh science as well as um I like how it opens it up to more kids and just gives them another option um could you please explain how parents had the opportunity to be involved in um reviewing um the textbook?
So um we did we moved forward with bringing this forward to the board for approval um we did not have a public review we did have that set up for uh the public library to house it this time and the intent was that the public library would have the materials on display for a week and during the hours of operation that the public library was open people would be able to come in and comment on it the um situation with the libraries being closed prevented that from happening and we made the decision to move forward with the textbook anyway.
When was the scheduled to be implemented I assume for this fall and um if we were to delay um this how would that the uh launch of it be impacted for this fall?
Yeah the we have um about 150 students just under 150 currently registered for the class and uh it would what would happen is we'd end up delaying the um we would end up delaying the professional development on the resource for the teachers uh that would make them rely on um more teacher created materials for the future um kind of relying on some of their old um from a previous textbook that had been retired years ago um things that they've retained and lessons that they've developed without the uh primary resource and the consistent resource across the board.
Is that professional development do you know if that is going to be available online for the teachers I guess I'm trying to um I mean I I love it when we get to put our brains in this pre covid you know bubble but we aren't anymore and I wanna make sure we're on the same page I'm also anticipating uh potential you know we don't know how long this is gonna last and also um opportunities going forward in the future for distance learning um it is would their professional development still be able to go forward in a distance learning environment even for the teachers because you know the teachers are always learning as well.
Yeah so the the textbook is um we're ordering some print copies but there's a it's a digital base as well and so the teachers have full access to everything digitally the presenters are working to have all of their presentation available electronically we would still have the presenter online it would be synchronous present synchronous um PD and that way our teachers can ask them to go back and go forward and really go through it at the pace that they need and to and follow up on questions immediately they do have some sync some asynchronous modules modules where the teachers could log in and review and have some training but that prevents the on the spot question and answer from the teacher the goal would be to have the first part of the training um June 8th which is currently scheduled as a professional day and then come back again in fall for another half day.
Okay thank you that helps very much.
I move to approve the purchase of dimension earth and space science as the primary resource for physical science in ninth grade. Motion and a second by Ms. Justman any more questions comments discussion on this? Seeing none Ms. Justman.
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ms. Dove.
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer.
Yes.
Mr. Fisher.
Yes.
Mr. Redholtz.
Yes.
And I'm a yes motion carries. Thank you Ms. Jackson and that completes our action item list tonight.
Mr. Hunger I've got an item uh actually conveniently back to the fast track recommendation for policy 187 um I wanna thank Mr. Monte Schmiede he sent me an email saying I don't think you guys fast track recommended that because technically a fast track recommendation requires unanimous approval which we did not have and so um I think we need to reopen we need to reopen that item um and I I would assume we have a number of choices one is we could just leave that uh leave that failed fast track the way that it is I raised to the board the points that I think unfortunately the the framers of this particular policy 187 inadvertently created a conundrum and I do mean it was inadvertent but when I review it I'm not sure it permits email comments we'd have to do it comment cards literally the people have to get them in the room where it's held and so I just wanna mention to the committee that I feel like if we don't do something and we leave this the way that it was uh we're quite handicapped as to allowing public comments at virtual meetings interestingly we've got a great policy I think it's 181.5 on the ability to have a virtual meetings but uh public participation uh is uh the way that it's phrased right now not practical in a virtual situation.
Chris can we um add to 181 the part public participation or the community participation as part of the virtual meeting policy?
Let's take a look so this is 181.5 virtual attendance at board meetings uh let's see.
My only concern is as you're looking that up Chris is that that is not an agenda item tonight at all.
Oh very true.
We'd be.
Fair point thank you point of order.
I can stop that right there good suggestion though oh Mr. Dwyer do you think we I'm looking at you as a as my attorney expert here can we open this up or now that we've taken a vote and it's failed are we done um discussing this at this meeting um how to say that?
I believe we need to we need to take a motion of the board to reopen this particular this particular item um and you know that may pass that may fail but I thought at least we should I should raise a point of order that we shouldn't leave the meeting thinking that we fast tracked that particular one but I would move to reopen the agenda item for the fast track recommendation for policy 187 public participation at board meetings.
Second.
Christopher Dunn just a I don't know for sure you're way more parliamentarian than I am since it failed does it have to be a move to reconsider and it can only be certain people who can since it's already been voted down by the body and it didn't wasn't really voted down but it it didn't pass with unanimous and that's what it is is there anything that requires a move to reconsider and then it only certain people can can Is there anything that requires a move to reconsider and then it only certain people can, can make that motion? I don't know if it's one of the six that voted in one direction or if it's, if it's somebody, Kurt, on the other direction, but I, but I don't know. Parliament or procedure, if you have the ability to reopen a, a agenda item that's already been voted on unless there's a official move to reconsider, but I, I don't know that.
Uh, that's, well, that's a good point, Don, and I, uh, have to admit, I don't have precise knowledge of exactly how that works. But I would say to be safe, uh, there would be no harm in a motion to reconsider. Uh, and if it received unanimous approval, uh, then I think we would be, we would be safe to proceed.
So a motion to reconsider needs to be made by someone who is on the, um, prevailing side of the motion to be reconsidered. Um, so did it, is the prevailing side the failing side because it didn't pass fast track?
Yes. No, you're right. You're right, Lenny. That's it. So I guess Kurt, it comes down to you. Uh, you get to choose whether we reopen this or not. No pressure.
I think my comments are the same. That I would not vote to reopen it. We seem to be somewhat, I just say my, my comments are the, the, the same. We seem to be in a gray area today and potentially in a gray area in the future for a virtual meeting. I would say that's not the intent of myself or, or what I've been a part of, always listening to comments, um, always welcoming comments at school board meetings, always listening, um, to comments on the street or in emails. But, um, I really just stand by my comments before and I'm not favor reopening it.
So Joel, I think based on that, we, we, and you guys, i- if you want to have comments at the April meeting and it's virtual, then, then Don would be here and I am in the building right now. I would provide an opportunity for someone to come in one-on-one to make a comment at the micro, if that's what you, we choose to do, then we can still have a virtual meeting and would allow someone to come in and make a comment. We would have to keep the, the numbers minimum. When they get done, they leave, they kind of go from there. And we'd have to fill out the forms just like we did in the past.
Yeah, uh, Superintendent, I think, uh, I think you're right. I envision us maybe setting up a laptop in the lobby or in, uh, you know, maybe the boardroom podium downstairs, I suppose. And then as you say, uh, uh, an individual could walk into the building, fill out a comment card, um, leave it at the president's desk, um, and then, uh, somehow monitor that and the individual would be called to the podium in front of a computer to deliver their, um, public comments.
Okay. Very good.
All right. Uh, Mr. Zweiger and, uh, and Monte Schmiggy for bringing that to our attention. That's the, the beauty of, uh, technology these days. We're able to do that. So thank you. Uh, moving on to our discussion tonight on the teacher compensation model.
So there's a number of documents for you in board docs. Um, I'm going to try and follow along with the, um, presentation document that I put there. Um, basically our timeline for, um, discussing and possibly approving a new teacher compensation model has been delayed because of coronavirus. We had planned on having a discussion on March 23rd over this and then to hopefully bring it for approval tonight. Instead, tonight is our discussion item around this. Um, on the presentation, the second slide, I again kind of rehash the history behind where we've been. Um, really the, um, board and administration collected feedback on the previous frameworks effectiveness between 2014, 2017. And, um, based on that feedback, the board directed administration to begin development of a new, um, teacher compensation model, which brings us to today. Um, on the third slide, I again, um, revisit some of the challenges that were, um, found to be present in the previous framework. You know, I don't think, I, I, I truly think that those who created the, uh, previous framework were intent on reaching the goals that they laid out. Um, unfortunately there, in execution, um, those goals were not realized. Um, and then there were some additional challenges that the board and administration discovered. Um, on top of that, uh, when, when it was implemented. Um, and those are highlighted there in that presentation. So that brings us again to kind of, uh, rehash the timelines we were on. Um, and then brings us to where we are currently with the proposed model. So I'm on the fifth slide. Um, the proposed model has two primary components. And I'm going to discuss this a little bit because the board really, um, can provide direction on how they'd like to proceed. The first component is the actual compensation model, which is a, you know, document that's 22 pages in length and lays out the, um, general components um, and operations of the new model that's being proposed. This document though, does not contain dollar amounts. It's really a document that guides the philosophy and processes of how the model would function. The second document, um, is the, called the teacher compensation chart. Um, that document is where you'll actually find dollar amounts. This teacher, so the teacher compensation model is a document that's brought one time to the board for approval and upon approval remains in effect, um, in perpetuity. As the model discusses, this chart is brought on an annual basis. And this chart, um, outlines both the amounts given for various types of expertise pay, um, many of which are present in the existing framework. So it's not that we're abandoning every element of the previous framework, but I would say we're pruning the parts that really seem to, to function well, um, and keeping those, uh, along with us. And then the second page of that gets into the novice, um, salary scale. And I'll talk about that in a little bit. Um, so, you know, the, the, the next slide kind of has some options for the board to consider, which might guide our discussion and perhaps we can talk some and then you just, uh, determine the procedure you'd like to follow afterwards. Um, originally I had thought we would vote on both documents simultaneously when we get to that point. And tonight is not that point. Given our unique situation, we could also consider perhaps approving the model first and bringing the compensation chart at a different, um, date as well. Um, so those, that's something for the board to consider as well as just when we would ultimately bring for approval. In, in, in terms of the big discussion items, and obviously I'm here to entertain any discussion or questions you have, but some of the big items I think for the board to consider, um, there was really one primary item out of the actual teacher compensation model. And it has to do with what we're, we're calling the salary ceiling. Um, basically the way the model is designed is that there are two types of pay that a teacher can earn. There is the, the salary component and then there is expertise pay. The salary component is what's subject to your annual across-the-board increases and whatnot, your typical teacher salary. Expertise pay is where we separate out some of those items that, um, are additional expertises the teacher may have above and beyond their normal qualifications, um, for the position. So, uh, these are highlighted on that teacher compensation chart, but they can include, uh, master's degrees in a critical area which are approved by administration. They can include additional licensure in critical areas which are also identified by administration. And they can also include, um, national board certification, um, for teachers, which is a very, very high honor and not many teachers, um, accomplish. And then the, the fourth area is micro credentials, micro endorsements. And, um, the amount given for various micro endorsements and that, um, uh, and micro credentials would be, um, proposed annually to the board as well. So, um, tho- those are the two components. So the way the salary ceiling, um, is impacting here is the salary ceiling impacts one of those components. It impacts the salary side. Expertise pay is not limited by the salary ceiling, but instead added on top of what salary would be. So the, the salary ceiling is not meant as a freezing of salary. And I guess that's where sometimes the term ceiling is a little, um, confusing. In the current model, it basically says that once a teacher hits the salary ceiling, which, uh, the initial proposal was $75,000 in the teacher compensation chart. Once a teacher hits the salary ceiling, they would receive only a portion of across-the-board pay increase, um, granted by the school board each year. So the real question and then the purpose of that is, is really a, a couple of things. Um, first it is to ensure that we are able to accelerate salaries at the lower end of the, um, of the salary scale to a degree that allows this teaching to be a true career profession that someone can be committed to and, and earn a, uh, a living in that will keep them in the profession. Because as we've talked about before, the real point of the whole model is teacher retention and recruitment. Um, and then, but then also the, the reason that we set it as a portion and not, you know, in many industries, I'm sure you're familiar with, um, you know, once you hit that top of that band, you're frozen. We, we didn't want to do that. We felt that'd be very disengaging. Um, we thought that was one of the biggest, um, concerns brought to us when we convened our two different teacher compensation committees, uh, made up of teachers, um, that, that a freeze really had a, a excessively negative impact. So really the question in the model comes down for me that I'd like the board to give input on is whether you would like to define what a portion is. We can certainly do that in the model. I've, I've kind of ran the numbers on what that, um, what kind of impact that has. If it's a 50% or 70% or 35%. Um, so the board has that option or the board can choose to, to allow the model to just say a portion. And then each year, when the board approves, if they approve, across-the-board increases would define what that portion is on an annual basis. So for me, that, that's the first kind of question for you to consider. The other questions to consider have to deal with the compensation chart. Um, the first question is how, what to compensate for expertise pay amounts on that first page for things such as licensure and master's degree. Um, I feel very confident in the amounts that we've proposed here. Basically, um, what we've taken is the expertise pay amounts that we had given previously and teachers are currently earning, um, but we've inflated them by CPI since the inception of the model. And the, the reason for that is one of the big problems with the previous framework is that it did not call for annual updates, which meant, yes, the, the, the starting teacher salary that we laid out in 2014 in that document was competitive, but it has not moved for six years, making it now not as competitive. Uh, the same would apply, um, in terms of how much we're granting for the additional masters and additional licensure. So the amounts there, I, I'm happy to discuss, but I feel we, we put some good work into figuring out where to set those. Where to set that salary ceiling is that, um, other key item. Um, and then the starting teacher and novice salary scale. So we've modeled a number of different novice salary scales as we've looked at this. Um, the $43,000 number that you see on page two of the chart, we feel very strongly about is the right starting spot. The previous model had looked to inflate salaries on the novice scale by about 3% annually. Um, and you know, the goal there again is really looking at how do we accelerate salaries to the point that not only does a new teacher join our district, but do they say, wow, four or five years from now, I'll still be in a good spot. I, and, and allow us to retain them as we invest in education and those sorts of things. So I've put a lot out on the table for you. I think the, the key items that I need definite direction from the board tonight are first whether they, whether you would like us to, um, put together proposals to vote on both items at the same meeting or separately. When you would like such a vote to take place. And then whether to define that portion in the model or not. Um, those are the first three that I think are the most crucial decisions to be made. Um, before we get into that, I don't want to forget, there was one public comment related to, um, our definition of base wages. And I do want it to, to be known that, um, we did follow, um, the preference of that particular commenter, um, in the most recent negotiation, which is the one, the first one that, um, uh, Andrew Sarno and I were part of. And we did follow the original W E R C, um, W E R C rules, uh, emergency rules for defining base wages as that commenter defined. So I can, and we've never stopped, um, running those calculations of what those base wages are. Um, so I hope to put that commenter at ease a bit, um, in that we have followed that, um, guidance, um, in our negotiations this year. So there's a lot out there and I am here to answer all questions that you have.
Lenny, this is Paul. Um, again, well done. Um, I'm anxious to, um, get this into practice, not race through it, but, uh, we've obviously, this has been hanging out here for a while. And I guess my first question would be, uh, with respect to your question on timing. When do we need to take action on this in order to have it in force for, um, the next school year presumably? Is there, is there a window where if we don't act on this by a certain date, it doesn't become effective until July 1 of 2021, for example?
Well, teacher, um, teacher salaries are timed a little bit differently from our other staff. So teacher salary changes take effect, um, when the new school year begins, when they come back.
September 1.
September 1. Um, that being said, I think we'd all be in agreement that we'd like to have this, approved prior to that, um, well in advance so that we can engage in the negotiating, um, process. Um, you know, with a reasonable amount of time, I think we'd like it, um, approved so that we can plan budgetarily as well. Um, I would say, um, you know, I, I'd look for, uh, Mr. Sarno's input as well. Uh, May or June is certainly beneficial for us in terms of planning and moving forward from there. But, uh, I don't know what Andy thinks.
Yeah. Thanks, Lenny. Um, I, I think just making sure that we, uh, give due diligence to the implementation process, making sure that we don't jeopardize accuracy, um, as well as even just communication to staff and making sure that everybody is aware of, um, what it means for them, how, you know, when it's going to be rolled out, what it might even mean for that first paycheck in September. So I guess that's what I'm after, um. And does that allow for enough time to, to make that happen? I believe it does.
Andy or Lenny, this is Ms. Kirkard. Is there a, um, at one time we had really hoped to have negotiations this spring so that we would not do a retroactive pay in December or in February or November, whatever case would be. With the coronavirus, with some uncertainty at the state level, that's not going to happen. And so even if we don't have it in September, what will happen? I mean, we'll have it as soon as we can, hopefully by September. But if we haven't negotiated, we'll just start salaries at their current level and then we'll be retroactive once negotiations are complete. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, that, that's been my goal. I think this is my 22nd year in education. I think I've hit it once where we haven't had any retro pay. Um, so yeah, we, we just need to proceed and understand what that means. Um, and we, we would have retro pay if we need to do some changes after the first paycheck. So, yep. Lenny, anything to add?
No, I mean, I, I agree. You know, we had really hoped that we'd be able to negotiate this spring um, and avoid that retro pay and really get that communication out before people even leave for summer vacation. That seems unlikely right now.
Very good. Any more, uh, questions for Mr. Hanson? And, and I know that you posed some questions to the board here and, and trying to gather some thoughts. And, you know, being that this is not an action item, um, tonight, I, I guess I want to be careful that we're not making any formal decisions tonight. Um, are you open to us, you know, obviously giving you a phone call or emails with questions and comments as far as, uh, picking the brains of the board members?
Yep. Um, I am happy to answer any emails, calls, anything like that. Um, again, I think those, those three key questions to look for guidance from the board is A, kind of what, you know, and I guess, you know, we've kind of given our opinion around the timeline. So it's really the board's decision as to how quickly they'd want us to put this on the agenda again. Um, whether you would want us to have a fully Whether you would want us to have a fully completed teacher compensation chart as well as the model presented simultaneously, or if you wanted, you know, the model is kind of the underlying, underlying foundation. So if you'd like to kind of get that, take them care of first, we have that option, or we can do them simultaneously. And then the third big one is whether, you know, your appetite for defining what a portion of an across-board increase is that would be given to anyone at or above that salary ceiling. And I know there's, there's a lot to consider there, so I'm more than happy to answer any questions that anyone has now or later as we work towards that outcome.
Hey, Lenny, this is Kurt. I just have two maybe quick questions. Obviously, you've done a lot of work, and this has already been a discussion item at a past board meeting. And obviously, some teachers have seen this, so I got two questions. One, what has been the initial perception of any teachers that have viewed the framework from this is the first question. And the second question is, a comment first and then a question is, this seems to be, you put a lot of work into it, the best of both models between some old version steps and ladders compensation plan and 100% merit pay compensation plan. So it seems to be a hybrid. People are being rewarded for extra work and effort that they're giving in the classroom. So I don't know if this hybrid model is called something, and I don't know if I'm categorizing it right, calling it a hybrid best-of-breed model. So any of your comments on any of those two questions?
Sure. So on the first one, we presented on March 9th, and that was our last week of school. So I have not, I have not received feedback from teachers on this since March 9th. You know, I think that the model piece, I sir, I was part of the second compensation committee that convened and met a number, quite a few times. And certainly, the outcome from that one, as well as what was reported to me from the first one, was that some sort of hybrid type model like you talked about that really was preferred by the members of those committees. So some sort of model that recognized kind of a combination of continuous effective teaching, because anyone who doesn't maintain that effective level becomes ineligible for the across-the-board increases, merged with, like you said, those that are putting in that additional energy and investment to advance their expertise in areas that the district really needs. You know, I think that's one of the big differences between some of the older models that you might see around the state and some that are still in place, to be honest, is the district drives what we approve as expertise pay areas in this model. So there, you know, someone, you know, there are certainly a lot of place, lot of different content areas you can go and get continued education in, but the Westman School District is only going to provide any additional compensation if it's one of these few areas that we think is, you know, focused on where we need to grow. And then I think the micro endorsement piece, which I'll talk about in a little bit, is the additional piece that makes it a hybrid, because I think it really takes some of that, all those older models and makes them more applicable to the way business is done today. So, you know, we, the only public comment we heard today was from our community member with the question around base wages. Obviously, teachers have been busy since March 9th, but I have not received feedback in large, well, in any amount, to be honest, since March 9th. Your, I don't remember your second question.
Yeah, thanks, Lenny.
I can talk now briefly about micro endorsements and where we are. I think that is one of the more exciting and flashy parts of, of the model. As I reported at the last, at the March 9th meeting, we were a little disappointed in a lot of what was out there on the micro credential marketplace and started looking at some other partnerships. And I'm really excited to talk about, I mean, we have two micro endorsements almost finalized and ready to roll that would be ready for next year for teachers to begin if they like, as well as working on a number of others. They're highlighted on that second last slide in the presentation. We really did come to the conclusion that, so again, as a review, a micro credential is one course that involves both applica, acquiring knowledge and then applying the knowledge. A micro endorsement is what you get when you complete a few of those courses related in the same area, kind of like a mini certification per se. So what we've, we found a partnership with a local university to begin with, was actually willing to give all of our staff a 25% discount on all of their tuition for all, most of their programs, not just within education. And they're going to partner with us in order to deliver our first round of micro credentials that, and micro endorsements that then we want to add to, from any vendor we really can find that meets our quality expectations. This isn't about finding a, you know, creating a monopoly with one vendor. We want to have lots of options for teachers, but we also want to be rigorous and actually make a difference in the classroom and not the busy work. And that's, that's been a little bit of a bounce, but I'm excited about how, how well that has progressed.
Thank you very much for that update. And if we have any questions, obviously, board members are encouraged to reach out to Mr. Hanson on the phone or email, and I look forward to getting this in place. So thanks for all your hard work, and thank you to the team on this. Any questions on this before we move on? We are going to invite Mr. Ross to join us on the video and give us an update on the library project.
Good evening, everyone. Well, we're moving ahead on the library project. The bid documents went out on the street, I want to say about eight days ago. Today, we had our first walkthrough of contractors on pre-bid walkthrough. We have abatement contractors in there looking at things, so we're really getting ready to go. We'll have bid documents, or bids back, rather, on April 20th. And at that point, it just becomes a question of whether we're going to have school and when we can start, and so that's kind of where everybody is right now. But we just wanted to take a couple minutes and give you guys an update and let you know where we were with everything.
That's great. Dave, I was up in the building on Friday and took a peek in there, and the space now that the walls are torn down in some of those back rooms, the front rooms, it looks way better than it was before that happened, and so I'm really excited about the space itself. It looks, it looks big. And so for any other board members that want to take a peek, reach out to Dave as we go through this process, and I'm sure we can arrange to show it to you. But thanks for that update. Any questions on the library project?
Dave, am I correct in, it's a mandatory walkthrough, pre-bid walkthrough? Looks like you have six potential bidders, three today and three yesterday.
Uh, it looks like it's going to be five. We had one back out there a little afraid of the structural work that needs to be done in there.
That just made, could have sparked another, why are they afraid of this?
Yeah, tell me more.
They're basically an interiors contractor, and that's what that job kind of started out to be, but they're just not versed in the structural elements that need to go in for the skylights, so. They're going to, they're going to sub their numbers out to everybody else.
Gotcha.
So those numbers would be higher and they wouldn't be competitive, so, okay, great. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions on that? Thank you, Dave Ross, for joining us tonight. We're going to move on to our emergency distant learning update.
So just a couple of quick comments for you, and then I have, Tim is going to talk a little bit about technology, Laura's going to talk about grading, but as of today, the governor has not closed school down for the rest of the year. I know that he met today, he had a discussion, he said that he's in discussion with DPI, and at some point in time, they're going to make some recommendations. Whether those recommendations close the entire state down, or they leave it up to local districts, at this point in time, we're scheduled to come back to school on April 24th is the last day, and so it would actually be then Monday, the 27th. If the governor doesn't close it down for the entire state, then we will need to work closely with the Washington County, Ozaki County Department of Health, as well as our local and health providers for their recommendations. And I believe at that point in time, if the state shuts it down, that's one thing. If we're going to do an extended shutdown of school based on the circumstances in Washington County, then I would like to bring that back to the board and have a board. I don't feel comfortable closing school down for the remainder of the year just based on, on Don. And so it would certainly be based on board input, board decision, and look at the parameters of the, you know, we're different than if we're up in the Upper Peninsula. We are pretty close to the epicenter right here in Washington County. It's not obviously the same as Milwaukee, but, but we're, we have a high concentration as well, and so we're going to have to take all of those things into consideration and make a decision, but I think that needs to have significant board input when we make that decision, if it comes from someplace other than the governor.
John?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. This is Tani. Have you been in touch with the other superintendents in the county? I was reading today about the East Coast and the West Coast governors coordinating when their economies are going to open back up, and just got me thinking about what we're doing here, even if we aren't getting direction from the governor, if, if you're, if somehow our own area can, can have its own consensus.
And certainly, we'll do that and have done that on a regular basis. I think even though on the East Coast where they're looking at opening up the economy, all of those schools have closed for the remainder of the year. So they're trying to figure out how they can get business going, but business going doesn't have anything to do with K-12 education, and I believe most of those have closed for the year. And like I said, I don't know what the governor will or won't do in Wisconsin. Obviously, southeastern Wisconsin is significantly different than north central, and so might do something that impacts part of us, but not all of us, and that would then want your input on, on that decision as to what we think is best for our students, the safety of our community. Next item that I have is that either at the April 27th meeting or the May meeting, we have to have a public input meeting, not a meeting of the electorate, but a public input meeting to discuss the waiver from DPI or the minimum hours required. And so every state, every school in the state will be holding a meeting, a public input meeting, and so since we're virtual, we'll have to figure out a way for the public to give those comments to us. Those comments are just for you to consider. It really becomes the board's decision as to requesting the waiver. Like I said, I believe every school in the state will be requesting a waiver on the hours based on the coronavirus. And so we'll need to work and make sure that we have adequate time. It does, it only have to do it once, and so either the April meeting, the next April meeting, or May would be the time that we would go forward with that. Have some questions regarding graduation and other events, and I just want everybody online to know that we will have graduation. There's no ifs, ands, buts about it. We're going to have a graduation ceremony process program for this year's seniors, okay? Can't tell you for sure what that's going to look like, because I don't know. I can't tell you even for sure when it's going to be, but I can tell you that, that there's absolutely no doubt in my mind that we're going to try to figure out some kind of mechanism for graduation for this year's senior class, and we'll do it as best we can, and we're going to try to make it a great event, and it might be a two-part event. We might have a virtual ceremony and diplomas and a reception down the road, or we might, there's just a lot of things that we can look at, but, but I want everybody to know that graduation is not on the table. It is going to happen this spring sometime, and I would hope that it's going to happen on the scheduled date, but I don't know for sure what that's going to look like. As for some of the other activities, we don't want to cancel anything until they get close to that point in time, and then we can potentially look to postpone them in certain cases, but we don't want to cancel the state track meet because the state WIS hasn't canceled track. The prom is, is still down the road a ways. We don't want to cancel the prom until we figure out if we can have a prom, and if we can't have it on the scheduled date, is there another date that we can have it? Can we look at those things? And if we can't have it, we can't have it, and maybe they have some other activity this fall, but no cancellations of any activities until, until we absolutely need to. Seniors have been contacting us. We have several that have asked for early graduation, and so we are opening up so that a senior has met all the criteria and would like to graduate early. They can, and we're going to get something out soon. We're looking at maybe a May 1st, as they have to let us know by May 1st if they're planning on graduating early, okay? We have worked with the, oh, different schools that give credits, and there is no penalty for withdrawal. So if you were going to Marine Park and you were dual-enrolled in a class and you wanted to get out of that class, Marine Park isn't going to give you a, a F for going too late. It's just a withdrawal, and there will be no penalty involved, okay? Also, looking at seniors who can graduate with A credit, a required class, but are taking six classes just to fill in the extra time, encourage everybody to take as many classes as they would like, but no, no penalties for somebody dropping out early, or excuse me, quitting a class and still being eligible for graduation. We want to make sure that the counselors work with everybody. We don't want somebody to drop a class that potentially is important for college admission, for, for some other type of areas. I believe, and Laura's going to talk in just a little bit about grading, for example, the AP test. The AP test is going to be a virtual test this year rather than a, in a group, and the AP material stopped in March as far as nothing that took, is being taught from March 14th through the end of the year is going to be on the test. It's going to be just more of a review of what happened prior to that March date as far as for the AP exam. The, at the, just one more comment, and then I'm going to turn it over to Tim for a second. Food service, we distributed 8,440 meals today. So far, we've distributed over 30,000 meals to people in our community since the start of the coronavirus. And so just our hats off to our food service, they've done a great job. We went to a weekly distribution, so we give them, when they come through, and they've got a great system in place, five meals for lunch and five for breakfast, they get it all at the same time, and so when they come through on Monday morning, they actually get 10 meals, and as of today, it's over 30,000 meals that we've distributed, and we will continue to do that as long as there's no school going on. So Tim, can you give us a little update on technology, computer distribution, hotspots, virtual classes, some of the trials and tribulations that we're having?
Sure. Good evening, board members. Tim Harder, Director of Technology. So when we, or when the decision was made to close school, the, the first thing that we had to address in the technology department was access for our students. And so we are currently a one-to-one device program in grades five through nine. We will be five through 12 next year through our technology plan. And so the first part of this was really getting access to our students, and that happens in two ways. One is by device, and the other is internet access at home. And so I'll talk about the device piece first. Up until this date, and we have 850 Chromebooks that have either been distributed or will are reserved, and will be distributed tomorrow. And so we have about 22 that'll go out the door tomorrow, and we accomplished this by really taking and dismantling all the carts that we have across the district or charging towers and taking them off the wall, pulling all of the nicely organized cords and so forth, when you have 30 to 35 devices in a cart, and getting them ready all for deployment. And so that was completed by both my technology staff, and we also have some help from our library staff, who helps us check in and out our Chromebooks for our students throughout the year. We started the process with a focus, you know, mirroring what was happening in the learning side of things. Um, we started the process with a focus, um, you know, mirroring what was happening in the learning side of things, um, focusing on making sure that our students in 10 through 12 had a device. Um, students in grades five through nine who didn't take their device home and it was still sitting in their locker as kids couldn't come back to school. Um, and then extended that down to the kindergarten through fourth grade, um, grade levels to provide devices for students at home. Uh, we still continue to get um, a request for devices at this point in time. Um, and so we have a process every Tuesday and Thursday. We have a group of three staff who um, do two things. A, they are handing out any requests on devices and or internet hotspots. And I'll talk about those hotspots and their importance in just a second. Um, and then we also have a very unique break-fix process where we have to um, in essence, still support our kids whose devices aren't working. And so it's, you know, when school's in session, it's great. The kid comes to the library, drops it off, gets a moaner, walks out the door and we keep going. Um, here it's a little bit different. So, um, but that process happens every Tuesday and Thursday. Um, from 11 to 1:00 up at the high school, we do a little drive-through right in front of the west entrance. Um, the other part of the access piece is really providing internet access or helping our families get internet access. And so um, in education, we often talk about the digital divide. Um, and the digital divide used to be about devices. And it's not so much about devices, it's about quality internet. And um, I I'm luck lucky enough that I sit in a a group of tech directors across the state and we talk regularly. Um, we have a standing meeting daily. And that is the big issue that districts are dealing with um, in the state of Wisconsin and in other states is is how do you provide quality internet access to do some of the things that we're doing? Intensive video watching, um, you know, video conferencing, high-end graphics work on a webpage and things that aren't just looking at a Google Doc or reading a Google presentation. Um, and so the district, as soon as we knew that we were going to make a closure, we automatically ordered 80 hotspots um, to expand on our 13 hotspots that we have in the district currently. Um, right now, we have 78 of those already out or planned to be distributed this week. Um, we still have families that are contacting us or teachers through their work of contacting and finding out why is it that Johnny or Suzie haven't engaged in their learning? We're trying to make sure that everybody has that equitable access. But even those internet hotspots is as great as they are. You have to have a good cell phone reception. And I live just outside of the city of West Bend and I know what the internet connection is just north of me. And I'm lucky enough that I'm on a a coaxial cable through a through a uh, like a charger or an AT&amp;T. There are areas around us that don't have that access. And so um, you know, many of our families have been using their hotspots on their phones. Um, we have been working with providers and sharing information out where some of the phone companies have increased unlimited data or allowed the hotspot piece. Some of the providers have said, we'll give you 60 days of free internet at home. So we've been communicating that piece out, but really trying to hit um, that digital divide and support our students. If they don't have that access, they aren't going to be able to be um, online. Um, the other part of this is really supporting our staff in in the teaching and learning department of using online tools. And over the last um, four years, we've really focused on the security and privacy side of where our kids' data goes and what they use. And so that's a hard balance when you're trying to fast-track and just dump everything online. And so um, we balance that every single day. Um, and so uh, we as a district sit as part of a larger data privacy consortium where we have a standard contract that we work with vendors. Um, and in all reality, some of these tools weren't set up to do the type of virtual learning that we are doing today or being asked to do in the United States. And so um, we leverage tools that we currently have, our systems that we currently have in the district, Canvas, which is our learning management system, grades five through 12. Um, and our teachers utilize that along with Google um, as part of the design piece or the building of assignments and so forth. And we continue to use those um, K-12. Um, Canvas is a 512 product and then K-4, they are using Google Classroom to work back and forth. Um, as soon as we had the first configuration done in Canvas to open up video conferencing, we had that ready to go for our 512 staff. We had them pilot that, um, find all those different tweaks, build the directions and get it out the door. Um, and then we had to wait for Google to provide us some of the controls to be able to hold a a secure online video conference. If you saw the news, there's a a few um, news articles about some hacked video conferences and so forth. Um, and you know, right or wrong, there are districts who open up and use certain things. And we wanted to make sure that our kids' experience was both quality, but it was also private and safe. And so we had to wait for those tools to come in hand um, and be able to control those different ass- assets of the the video conferencing system so that just not anybody could hop into these tools. Kids couldn't video conference on their own. Um, before some of the controls we had when we were done this with this meeting, uh, myself and Don, if we were students in in the class, we could have hopped in and had our own video conferences on our own with no, any sort of supervision in any way, shape or form. Um, and so we were waiting for some of those controls. And so um, those pieces are out there. Our students and staff are utilizing those to connect. Um, and then it's really supporting our parents and our students. Um, we averaged in the first three weeks, uh, in the first three weeks, we had 250 support requests. And those are on literally just on, I have a problem logging in. I have a problem with a Chromebook. I need a hotspot. I need a Chromebook. I can't get into this. It's not even the how to use the tool. I'm not sure how to use Google Classroom. We have a separate email for that and that has another 150 to 200, 200 emails in that account. Um, and we'll continue through the duration of the closure to continue to offer devices. Um, internet access hotspots, we will continue to hand those out until we run out. Um, right now, if we were to order from our vendor, we will not get them till July. Um, so internet hotspots are quite the commodity right now. Um, and so uh, we were lucky enough to get our order in and then we'll continue to swap devices out and hand those devices out on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So that's my update this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I want to make sure that we're, um, I don't want to be hamstrung by what we don't have and I want to maximize being able to use what we do have. Um, are students able to, who do have um, uh, limited uh, Wi-Fi bandwidth? Are they able, is it acceptable for them to call in instead of video in?
Yes, so we we can set it up that way. What we're doing right now is looking at with what, what we're seeing is is the the access piece isn't, I don't have. With the the people who have internet access or have a quality internet access or even using their cell phones, those vendors, even my own vendors said, we're not going to charge you the $5 a month to be on a hotspot. Um, you know, and you get 10 extra gigabytes of data. Um, we continue to work through uh, Wisconsin DPI um, and some others to push that avenue, continue to open space. Um, we have not had the student who has said, I don't have data. What we're doing is we're giving them our hotspots if they don't have that need. Um, and we'll cross that bridge at that point in time if they do need to call in um, and join a meeting at that point.
Okay. Um, I was talking to someone today, not in our district, but um, someone in a more rural area north of us. And um, her son was having, he wasn't able to turn in his project in time because something couldn't download in time. And um, there was some a communication issue with uh, the student being able to effectively um, communicate to his teacher that he needed more time not to complete the project, but but because um, he just didn't have the assignment um, downloaded so that he can complete it and and turn it back in. Uh, maybe this is a question for Laura, I'm not sure. But um, are the, I want to make sure that we have some consistency across um, for all of our teachers so that their um, their messaging is consistent um, for how they're communicating with with students for um, that are having trouble uh, downloading things or completing assignments. Or Don, if you want to speak to that, you can.
So so the one thing I will say on that, Tani, is is I I see a lot of, yeah, that's okay. It's okay that, you know, you're having a technical issue. We have staff, you know, teachers reaching out to say, you know, did Tani really have an issue? You know, if there really is that concern, we can go back and look. Um, but in Laura will talk about the the synchronous versus asynchronous learning and why the district chose to go the asynchronous route later on in her portion of it. Um, but a lot of what we're finding out now is is we're hearing from teachers who are sharing with us that that student is having technical difficulties. They don't have the quality internet access. They don't have the device that they need. And so I think our teachers are very open and receptive to that, that, you know, we we aren't doing, some other districts are saying it has to be in by 3:30 today and it doesn't count. Or that's your attendance or whatever it is. Uh, my experience has been the opposite in working with our teachers, K through 12 of a lot of, hey, this is all new to everybody and we're here to support you. When can you get your work done, Tani? And I don't know if Laura or Don have other experiences with that, but that's been mine.
Okay, and which is great. I'm glad, I'm glad to hear that. But I also want to make sure we have robust learning. Um, I know Paul mentioned that he had somebody um, complain to him that they're just getting a few assignments here and there. And um, I want to make sure that we're not driving everything to the lowest level um, just because some people have some some internet issues. So um, I guess I'd like to hear more about what solutions um, are being discussed uh, for that.
So I'm going to turn it over to Laura in just a second. But but but, Tani, you're 100% correct in that there's a huge, the difference between the haves and the have-nots is going to be even better yet. And so we're trying to make sure we're not penalizing the haves because they have the ability. At the same time, we don't want to to leave the have-nots alone. I don't know, it's not necessarily when I call it the have-not. They don't, they don't have the access. They don't have the support system in place. There may be limited English, limited, all the different things that go with it. And so I wish that I could tell you that it's the same quality education today that it was four weeks ago. It's just a different delivery model and it's not, and it's not going to be the rest of the year. Are we going to get better every day, every week? I hope so. But I I would absolutely be misleading you and or the public if I suggested that that in another week or two, it's going to be the same quality, the same rigor, the same um, expectations that we had a month ago because it's not going to be there. I I I'm hoping that we never have to go through this again. And if we do, I I can guarantee you that we're going to be in a different spot next fall than we are right now. But but we're not a distance education school. We have kids who, they're the primary child, they're taking care of their younger brothers and sisters. They're they're home with it by themselves. They have other ones who have a great support system. We have kids who are on IEPs and 504s and and ELLs and all the things that go with it. And and there's just, you you know, our our goal is to try to provide as much opportunity for engagement, as much opportunity for uh, enrichment as possible with with expectations as well. And so, you know, sometimes our best and brightest will learn despite what we do in the classroom, not because of what we do in the classroom. And you know, the the ones that I'm most concerned about are the kids who truly need to be force-fed education and and they do a good job, but they need to have somebody with them 100% of the time or or they're going to struggle. And uh, and you know, we all know some of those kids, maybe our kids. Maybe, maybe you had one that did it one way and one that did it a different direction and and uh, um, but I'm going to turn it over to Laura for a second and let her continue. But but I wish I could tell you that it's the same, just a different delivery model, but it's not. And it's not going to be the rest of the year.
Well, I I I appreciate that. I have, I have no expectation that it's going to be exactly the same. Um, um, I think it's very reasonable to expect that it it is not going to be as much. But at the same time, I know people want to be able to hear, okay, you know, we've had a month now, we should be able to present a plan. Um, even if we don't know if and when we're going to go back to school, I think we should assume that we're going to be out of school the rest of the year. Just, you know, we we need to make some basic decisions. Um, and and I guess people want to know what those are. And so to to the best that you can, I I would love to be able to hear those so that we can um, share that message with with people that um, are reaching out to us.
Take it away, Laura.
All right, thank you. As Don um, pointed out, emergency distance learning is completely different than attending a virtual school or classes taught virtually that are intended to be virtual. The student is seeking that opportunity. The teacher is well-prepared and that uh, lesson design and framework has been set up in advance for virtual learning. Excuse me. Our response to the emergency distance learning was the first week, we um, didn't provide uh, any instruction for the students. And that was our opportunity for staff and um, a program to be laid out for the time up to spring break. Uh, that period of time where we were getting all of our four, our K, uh, kindergarten through fourth grade teachers into Google Classroom, supporting our five through 12 with Canvas. Now, some of our fifth um, through eighth grade teachers had been using Google Classroom and we weren't going to make them shift to Canvas in that moment because their kids were used to finding things in Google Classroom. We had to really consider what's tolerable for a parent. If a parent is getting three emails a day from eight different teachers, that's problematic. And we're going to lose our parent engagement rather quickly, especially if you have multiple children and you're receiving that much contact. And um, we needed to really consider what is reasonable and what is equitable. And in doing that, um, DPI has has put out um, some information for school districts and our program, our, what we've laid out really aligns with the DPI expectations for the amount of time children are engaged in virtual act, um, online learning during this emergency distance learning. And um, so what we've laid out for our students aligns with that. They'll have time asynchronously, so it's not that you have to be logged in at 10 o'clock on a daily basis to get your class assignments. That allows the family the flexibility they need to make uh, do in this uh, situation in every single household. And I think that that was really important um, in order to begin to engage our students and our families through this process. The first two weeks of instruction were the two weeks prior to spring break. So while it's been since March 13th that we um, knew we were closing, the um, first week again, we were getting set up, um, getting devices out to people, getting um, our teachers going. Then the next two weeks, some instruction was provided. And that allowed families, students, teachers to all get into a free, um, uh, figure out how they were going to be able to work with this. While our teachers are sheltering at home, just like everybody else is safer at home, they're also working within their family structure as well. We um, now are, um, then we had the week of spring break. So there were two weeks of instruction in there. We, when we began planning, we planned for the up to spring break. That was the, initially, we were going to be coming back to school tomorrow and then that changed. So while all of those changes were happening, where our messaging to teachers was then, um, then we need to plan after spring break. And after spring break, we have to really look at how do our end of the school year goals modify for students? And what are those really critical pieces that um, we really, they really have to have to be prepared for what's next? We also know we have to adjust at the start of the school year. So whether we're back in session at the start of the school year, which I certainly hope we are, um, or we're not, we have to adjust for that. And um, when we have more information on that, it will tell us what kind of planning we're going to be doing. Um, up until spring break, we wanted to enrich and maintain at the K-6 level. So we were not going to be introducing new topics during those two weeks. At the K-6 level, it was enrich and maintain. At the um, 712 level, depending on the class you were teaching and where you were, what you had left off with, um, some of our teachers at that level, um, at the 712 level, really had a lot, have a lot online and do some flipped programs where the students might um, read or do the um, listen to a lecture or watch a little video in advance. And then in the classroom, they're really doing the application. When they're doing the application in the classroom, that allows the teacher to do a lot of on-the-spot micro-teaching, um, a lot of formative assessment, a lot of individualized coaching, asking questions and letting the student then um, apply that on the spot. In a this distance learning environment, that kind of um, feedback, that's gone. And so now they have to find, and they're working to find a different way while prioritizing those learning goals. Um, so we'll continue with, uh, K-4 is really going to focus heavily on their math and their and their reading skills and um, working on applying those, working on Skills and um working on applying those, working on uh. It is difficult to introduce some new things when you're first learning how to read through an online environment. Uh, when normally you'd be doing that with the teacher face-to-face, using manipulatives. And uh, the teacher would be um asking you questions and help and while you're moving them around and formulating words. Formulating problems and solving them in mathematics. So um, we have some new tools that we'll be starting to use from um this week. So in place for both reading and math at the lower grade levels. Then at the seven twelve level, they're going, they're continuing with their instruction. They've been meeting last week before break and this week coming up, that they're meeting in their um. Course-alike teams in order to really look hard at what are those essential learnings that we really need to um. Make sure we get in, and then again, what is the best framework for that? And what um, how are we going to be doing that? So again, some new tools are going in place at the high school level in certain classes for these next weeks. And um, or starting this week, and so um. The high school team is is also working on moving forward with that. They will be um, so students will be having that um. New instruction and further development of skills. It won't be skill development at the same pace as was happening in the classroom. Questions on that part, that was a lot, kinda fast.
Um, I I, yeah, I was trying to take notes, no, thank you, that's, that's good, I like that um. You have some new things um, starting this week, that's that kind of injects some. In excitement, um, I'm sure. Um, you mentioned flipped programs um at the seven through twelve level. Could you, I I don't understand what that means, would you be able to clarify that for me? You said they're doing a lot online and some flipped programs.
Right, so um, I'm thinking of like uh one particular teacher at the high school does his lectures, pre-records them. And then the students uh watch that as part of their homework at night. Then they come to class and they're having a debate and a discussion about the lecture that they listened to. With the information they gained from that. Uh, another example is at um, in a math class, they have um pre-recorded. All of the um, their at-home problems, so the students can watch those and work through them at home. And then come in and talk about uh the, how they solved it, what issues they ran into.
So it's almost like, so it's almost like their homework is getting, is is actually pre-work. For the class, so they they have to do things more in advance instead of afterwards. Would you say that's accurate?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great, good, thank you.
Mm-hmm, um. So at the um. At the elementary level, again, they're getting some new tools that they're they're starting with, I should just say, at the K. Um, five level, they're getting some new tools for math that they'll be using primarily for instruction at um in those classes. Their science and social studies will be related to the units that they're doing. But also connected to um the environment that they're in. So whether you're, you can go out into your your yard or the um take a walk around the block to discover some of the things. Um, they're more activity-based. Than um the science kits and all of those resources that they would have been using hands-on. Um, we're not sending the live animals to the homes. And um, and sharing those things. So those, that science and social studies are modified to be more um reflection and looking and working with. Um, what's in your neighborhood, what's in your um, what's avail- available to you in your home? That.
Yeah, I've seen, I've seen like scavenger hunts assigned, that sort of thing, that looks smart.
The, it all, it's so important to recognize how heavily dependent that is on the parent or the older sibling. And uh, for that case, that early instruction, that K six instruction, you're gonna have a lot of parent engagement. That is necessary to pull it off. And uh, we know our parents are also working from home at this time, so there's a lot of family dynamics to really consider. Um, some of our parents are working out of the home and um leaving the children with a caretaker of. Whether that's a sibling or another relative or a friend, and again, we have to be really mindful of that.
How far, how far in advance are they, I mean, obviously, you know, they're not. We've only been doing this for a short period of time, I I realize that, but um. I know that if, I mean, I've got three kids myself and I remember when they were small and. The farther in advance, even if it's just a few days, um, I could have these things. Then I could bundle them together and ma- you know, do things simultaneously, um. Um, so the, so the person who is in charge at home, whoever that might be, can kinda batch or or group or bundle. Um, like with like sorts of activities or desk time or, you know, screen time, whatever. Um, uh, is there any kind of um. Discussion or plans for how far in advance things should be um pushed out to parents? I just, I don't want these teachers to feel like they're on islands by themselves trying to figure this out, um. I would, I would like some guidance coming top-down for those kind of things.
So they ti- um, I would expect that they're posted at the beginning of the week. Um, some have posted them and posted them, will post them at, right at the end, like on the Friday for the upcoming week. Otherwise, um, they're posted Monday for the beginning of the, for the week. And again, the um way we're doing it at the high school um allows students that flexibility. So if they are working or caring for other, um, whether those be adult family members or younger siblings. They have the opportunity to see, um, to know when their uh uh lessons are. And then have the flexibility to adjust their day as necessary. Um, we did ask for leniency on due dates, the um turn it in by three o'clock on this day. Um, we need to be a little more flexible. Um, if class is scheduled for ten o'clock, it doesn't need to be turned in right at ten o'clock on that day. We need to be a little more flexible in that uh because of the different um things that our kids are dealing with. Um, one of the um presidents of one of the universities said it very nicely when they said, you know. When they left campus, uh, they went back to situations that are entirely different. And it is not at all equitable, what they're doing is not at all like what they were doing on campus. And uh, um, it was very uh interesting to hear that um. Uh, university president speak about that because they then modified some of the formats that their teachers are using in this online environment. As everybody's shifting over. Um, any other questions about instruction at this point?
Laura, this is Paul, um, apologize upfront for the. Uh, the the scope of this kind, this question, because with four hundred and fifty-some teachers in the district. I I'm sure we have teachers that are at every point in the spectrum in terms of how they're processing this. Um, I've exchanged emails with some of my my daughter, who's a senior at East, some of her teachers. And and one of them responded that, uh, you know, they really appreciated the reach-out, uh, they're struggling. And and granted, this was uh a week and a half ago, but uh change is difficult, and this individual's struggling because. They feed off the ability to build a relationship face-to-face with the students. And I'm just wondering, how are our teachers dealing with with this? We talked about the dynamic of of the students coming into the home situation, not necessarily having, you know, the best structures in place. And and equitability and so forth, um, but how about the teachers doing this from home with their own kids who are students? Or um, you know, various work challenges, access challenges perhaps on their side, um. How are they supporting each other? I'm assuming principals are are rallying their troops, but can you s- take a a moment and speak to that?
Yeah, I would say the um, like the first couple, the first two weeks, you know. The amount of meeting time that people were in was significant. And um, and those were the first two week, the the um, that they were prepping lessons and figuring out. Um, we got screencastified for every one of our teachers. Um, some had never used that before, and when you're recording a five-minute lesson or a ten-minute lesson. It may take an hour to do that because you're redoing and redoing and um. The amount of time, so it may look like, oh, that's just a ten-minute lesson, but holy cow, the amount that goes into that can be a lot. Um, I have gotten a lot of feedback from parents and, well, I shouldn't say a lot from parents. I've gotten fair- parent feedback and I've gotten teacher feedback, and um, the parent feedback has been uh. Three things, um, this is just right, thank you, I appreciate that we're not on day, on all day long, every day. And um, so I've gotten that, that it's just right, I've gotten that it's too much, and could we pare back? And I've gotten that it's not enough, um, and uh, from our teachers. Um, you know, we were considering adding more instructional time in going forward. Uh, and we pared that back after listening to, again, parents and staff. Um, and so then from that, I've gotten a lot of emails from teachers just recognizing, appreciating that we recognize that. Um, they're, the prep time it's taking because this isn't normal for them is significant. They're rec- they appreciate that we are not expecting them to be online from seven A M to three thirty P, uh, three thirty. And um, which is what some of our neighbor, our our other districts in Wisconsin and counterparts across the nation. Some of them are doing that, um, that's not going well for students or for teachers in many environments, some it may well be. But you're right, Paul, we were not set up, um, the high school had a virtual day earlier this year. And that was teachers' first experience with the, when we took the A C T, we had a digital day. And they prepped for one day of digital learning. Thank goodness we did that because that gave them some experience in thinking about. How they were getting the information out to students and what kind of lesson they were planning, but this is entirely different. So I would say uh, some of our teachers are stressed and um, but I will say I. They are doing the best they can and they are really working with a lot, they miss that that interaction with their students. You get a lot of information from watching your kids in class and a lot of information from how they're approaching a problem. Or how they're um, uh, discussing a topic and you you don't get that information the same way.
Thank you.
All right, um, any other questions on instruction? The um executive summary kinda laid out a little, but just a high-level overview of the weeks following April thirteenth, April thirteenth being today. And the last day before spring, uh, last day of spring break. So um, that information about instruction is on there, and then we we'll talk about assessment. Erin, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, and I, I don't know if this is a Tim question or a Laura question, and I, and I have been bugging Tim about this the past couple of weeks. But wondering if we're eventually thinking that we're gonna be doing this for the rest of the school year. Going to have a way for especially the older kids to be able to. Um, engage with teachers um. More quickly, more efficiently, um, I know the three high school students that I have in my house, and I'm just going off of this. Will email a teacher something, then wait for the email, and then send a clarifying email, and there's a lot of back and forth, and I would think that. That isn't efficient time on either um, for the teacher or the student. So I guess I was just wondering, I know there's set office hours, so I didn't know if there is a hope to be able to maybe. Have some sort of Google Hangout or something like that during a portion of those office hours.
You got it, Tim?
Yeah, Erin, so I can address it, so either the tools that we provide, the teacher can choose to do that. Um, what it comes down to a little bit is privacy, and so if I'm hosting a, and let's say we're all one class and I'm the teacher right now. And I post my link for my office hours, and I'm having a private conversation with Erin Dove about, you know, your grades, your class and everything else. Anybody else in that class can have that link, but the reality is, is our teachers can host those office hours if they show, so choose. And um, I know some teachers that have done that through Canvas conferences, Dave Tomo was our first pilot guy way back in, you know, March. I don't know, the first week we had it, um, where we had virtual learning, and he did it, he opened it up, anybody who wants to come in and questioned. They have the ability to do that same thing through Google, they can create a meet and say, I'm gonna be online from one till two o'clock today, here's the meeting code. Um, for some of the teachers, it's, are they comfortable doing it, are they not? Um, that's really where that, but they do have the ability to do that since we enabled that tool right away, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Tim, so that takes advantage of the fact that a lot of kids might have the same questions. And um, is there like a running log of of those? Obviously, they they enter that knowing that it's gonna be public, and they would um go offline to email or something. If they have um, something they don't want public, but um, um, so the kids would know to scroll through a his- history.
Um, so it's typically a link, it's not gonna record, um, so we do not allow recording of video sessions, um.
Oh, I'm sorry, I mean like a chat, like a chat.
So they can chat within there, they can chat, so right now, we could all chat, like you had posted something, I was chatting with Community TV just to make sure we were set up beforehand. So when that is there, it's accessible to them, um, once that chat goes over, once we close, that is not accessible to them. Um, our teachers do have the ability in both Canvas conferences and meet and setting up. I have the ability to say, you know what, I only in Canvas conferences want to meet with Tony today. I click it on at one o'clock and it's only available to you, or in Google Meet, I only share the join code of, you know, Mr. Harder's tech end class. To the three students that I need to meet with, um, our students don't have chat back and forth. In all reality, chat is very similar to email, it's same concept, um, it just pops up. A lot of it is, is the teacher available because they're meeting with another student, um, they are prepping materials for class. Um, some of those types of instant things, but with the video conferencing, the kids or the teachers have the ability to do one-on-one, small group, or whole class with both tools.
Okay, are you, are you um, oh, I just lost your audio there. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear.
Um, I know there's just so much changing constantly, um, are you getting a lot of questions? Um, from teachers for how to do things or how to support their students or um. You know, do they, do they feel like.
Yeah, so we we have a couple of different avenues, so the teachers have in in internal, um, they are, they're utilizing our instructional coaches and the technology staff. Um, so they have a form they can fill, they can meet with their building instructional coach um through virtual or talk to my technology staff and get that supported. Um, if they are struggling with a parent, uh, or a parent is struggling, or a student is struggling, and they notice something, we have. Two different emails based upon what you're asking for to go there, um, and so those are some of the numbers that I referenced early on of just the ability for our. You know, um, our staff to contact us or our students, um, even tonight, I've been responding to a few, um, I have a question on this and early on. That was a lot of, you know, Laura mentioned screencastify, well, these are tools we've been using in our system, but we weren't using them for that way. You know, we have a lot of teachers who use Canvas, but we had no need to turn on Canvas conferences and figure that because. Who was video conferencing up till, you know, four weeks ago? Um, and so I think there, there is a lot of that, um, a lot of late, late-night emails, um, both from kids and and teachers. And, you know, and afternoon, and we're gonna address them as fast as we can, and typically, you know, we're still within that twenty-four, forty-eight hour window. But it's even faster now, it's just extends beyond school day, cause let's face it, kids are doing their work now, they're not getting up at seven thirty in the morning and doing their work. And so I think that's been a change for our staff and, you know, and our students have understood that you may email a teacher at ten o'clock at night. Don't expect an answer back potentially, cause maybe they're at bed, and they have to get up with their own little kids next morning.
Yeah, yeah, and and actually, I'm trying to um, you know, think of ways for you to streamline and make things more efficient. And so that you're not doing all these uh point-to-point um communications, um. I know some places are putting out, pushing out like a three-minute video once a week of maybe you could. I mean, this is, this is an idea. once a week of maybe you could, I mean, this is just an idea. Um, a three-minute video that summarizes all your best ideas or answers to all your most frequent questions or, I mean, because you're, you're, you're the guru. You're the guy, um, the technical guy. And I know you have a great team as well, or maybe someone on your team would like to do that. But I just think it would be a really efficient use of everyone's time if they spent three minutes watching a highlight reel basically or a highlight, you know, push of, you know, hey, and it's, it's, you know, you send it at the same time every week, um, for three minutes. And all the teachers know to expect that they can watch that. And, you know, I just want to reduce the number of, you know, point-to-point questions you have to answer because, yeah, you'll be up, you know, there's not enough hours in the day for you to do that.
The little, little lack of sleep in, in my team and everybody feels that way, I think. So a couple of things that we do have in place that everybody may not be aware is, we typically try to stop the, Tim sends an email out, Laura sends an email, Don sends an email. We work with our site principals to share that out. And I'm going to pop, if I can do this real quickly here, um, on my screen, um, we have developed as part of our internet page, we have a special COVID page that is for, um, just for our internal staff. And so it should come up here shortly. Um, but basically it is a page where this is where you go. This is our impromptu website. So when you talk about those videos, we bring on a tool, it gets communicated out through our principal's email message. This is the directions. Um, and so this is where they go back to those videos. So it's not, it's a lot of reference of, go here, please, go here, please. This is your home base of, basically we created a, a simple webpage of this is our, you know, tools and resources during COVID-19 closure. Um, and when we started this, Lenny and I started this on day one and there was maybe three lines on it. And now it's, you can see links to, from, you know, from Don, from curriculum, from families to here's how to check your voicemail from home. Here's how to host a phone call with a student. Here's how to use this in Canvas. This is where we spend a lot of our time putting those. I've created a lot of videos and our coaches have and my staff have, um, and tutorials. This is where it all gets pushed back to.
Awesome. So, so you can find when asks you a question and it's the answers on this document, you can refer them back to that and then done.
Yep. Yeah, even things like in my email signature, I just had a teacher, I have a kid who needs a Chromebook. Yep, it's right here in my email signature. Take that document, send it to mama dad.
Wonderful. Okay, good. I just, I just trying to help out.
Oh, I appreciate it. Trust me, yes. Less emails I send is probably a good thing.
Well, I appreciate what you're doing. I know this is, this is a lot real fast, both, both you and Laura. Thank you.
Thank you. With the, um, it's that, having that one go-to place, sometimes it might take a little while to find the act, the, the, where the message was or where the instruction was because there's things embedded in each of those links. But, um, but knowing you can always go there is, um, very easy. It, it gives you the one-stop shop. Um, but sometimes it's hard to find it in the store, but, um, anyway, they, uh, I will say staff have been really, really supportive of each other. Uh, the instructional coaches really did a lot to communicate with, um, each individual teacher. Um, and, uh, the principals were holding support meetings with their staffs. The, um, EL teachers worked to get some information out for students as well as for staff. And our math interventionists who are more familiar with a certain program had, have created, uh, the student information that will, it will be available on Google Classroom this week as well as the teacher tutorials. And they are provide, being the go-to person at their site to address those immediate site questions so that people have, uh, someone that they know to go to as well instead of just always using a Google form to get it out there. I think that it has really helped to separate out, I need help with instruction, I need help with technology so that those questions aren't lingering forever, that they get, um, it's not all funneled into one spot, it's sort of sorted. I will say our, in, in doing some check-ins last week, one of the things that people have been really, really impressed with is the amount of collaboration of staff, uh, over the last few weeks. And that, that stood out tremendously. They were supporting each other. As Paul pointed out, some are very familiar with tools and others are not. And they, um, totally stepped up to really support each other to provide the best for students. And I think that is important. Um, so the, we have been watching, we've had two weeks. And in those two weeks of the schools that were, have completed reporting out their participation over the, those two weeks, the smallest percent of students at a school participating is 91. So that's significant. We've been connecting with other districts around the nation that closed prior to us to see how their participation rates have, uh, worked through this. And we're well aware of the declines they've seen and things like that. And we obviously want to, uh, avoid that decline. We're going to be working our best and working our hardest to make sure that we are able to maintain that engagement. But, uh, I want to just point out to you, I'm sorry, I was notified that the city lost the connection and what they're now showing is the March 18th board meeting is what's playing on the city TV right now. Uh, so I'm not even sure if they're recording this, uh, but just so you all know. Um, okay. The, and so we have on the, in the executive summary, we talked about the grading for each of our levels. Currently our fifth, our kindergarten through fourth grade have an E, an S, or an N on their report card. And we are saying that in this digital environment, uh, thank you, Tim, I see that you're, we have this recording now, so yay. Um, in the digital environment, we are not um, providing as much, we don't have that micro teaching going on. We don't have those on-the-spot extensions happening. We have extension activities that are available to students. We have, uh, the teach, the students will be reading at their own levels, but we're going to shift at the K-six level to the S and N, meaning satisfactory or needs improvement. It's not the same kind of instruction. It's not the, what we're doing in any class at this semester is not the same as what we did at this point last year. Uh, for our semester-long classes at the high school, second semester learning targets will look very different than first semester. They're not, the courses don't mean the same thing. And the, what students are being graded on are not the same. And that's important to note. So in the executive summary, I've shared what we've proposed for how we're moving forward with grading. We did spend a lot of time talking about this because there are so many factors to consider. Uh, keeping our students engaged is one of those. Accurately reporting out is another. Uh, looking at what's happening at the college level, uh, is, is another concern. As is what our students are dealing with because it's not the same learning that's at, in the environments they're currently learning in as it is in the school. So we spent a lot of time as an administrative team going through all of the, um, different formats that are out there. We talked by levels and we talked as a whole, uh, administrative team. And we went around to see, uh, where we were at the end. And every administrator supports the grading proposal that was shared with you. Uh, at this time, I would take questions you have on that.
Um, this is Nancy. I don't really have a lot of questions. I just have some comments. Um, I sent a very lengthy message to Laura with a lot of questions. And I understand that we are in unprecedented times. I, I certainly, um, you know, wouldn't begin to pretend that I know what it's like to be a student right now because I, I'm sure it's, um, it's very challenging. And I'm sure some students are having a much, uh, more difficult experience than others. So I think, you know, that goes probably on a daily basis as far as high school goes. There are some students who go to high school and have a, you know, robust, fabulous experience. And there are probably other students who despise every minute of being there. So I fully understand that. Um, I have a serious problem though with just going to pass fail for the grades. And, you know, Laura, you did a nice job of answering some of my questions, but I think you misunderstood some of my other questions. So I understand for seniors, most of those, um, students are already, either they've chosen a college and they've been accepted or they've, um, gotten their technical school acceptance or perhaps they're going into apprenticeship or whatever it might be. But the students that I'm most concerned with are students, um, even freshmen, sophomores and juniors who are looking at their GPA with the hopes for one day potentially applying for a large scholarship or get into a, you know, Ivy League school or even a UW-Madison. So if we have a junior who, I'm just going to pull numbers out of the air here. Um, first semester, they had a cumulative GPA of, let's say, 2.6. So they're kind of on the lower end of potentially getting into a school. But let's say this semester, they have really knocked it out of the park thus far and they're on target to get a 3.8. That 3.8 for this semester would have potentially pushed their GPA up to a much higher level for next semester. Now you're saying if these grades go to pass fail, this student will just simply pass, whether they get a D minus or whether they are cooking an A plus in there, right? It's just a pass or a fail. And this semester will basically not count for their GPA. So that junior will now move forward, even though they might have knocked it out of the park this semester or that sophomore or that freshman for that matter. Um, and, and they will really be denied the opportunity to increase their GPA with this new system. Is that true or false?
True. This, the GPA would not be impacted. So the junior with a 2.6 will, it would enter their senior year starting with that 2.6 as a, as a cumulative GPA.
So this is, this is Don. Um, y- you're, you're right, Nancy, they will, um, not go forward. Every student from West Bend will have seven semesters for GPA instead of eight. Okay. Try to check around the state to see what others are doing. And there are some that are, are allowing a student to, to do, um, opt-in as opposed to opt-out. Can't opt-in for one class, opt-in for all the classes. And so then, um, you, you really, you know, so that it becomes a difficult decision. And so you have to have them, they have nots. And, and it's not so much the individual's GPA is the overall class rank. Well, you know, we, we could very easily say that a parent is a equivalent to a four. And we artificially escalate everybody's GPA, GPA higher and not have a negative impact on anybody. But, but if you pick and choose which ones are going to get GPA and which ones are not going to get GPA, then it, it, it impacts or, or grade by class by class, it impacts their class ranking compared to their neighbor's class ranking. And so what, what I have seen and there, there are districts around the state doing it different ways. But what we have seen is that especially in bigger districts, the vast majority are going to a, a pass-fail type system. Okay, not all of them, but a majority. I believe our universities are going to a pass-fail system. You can get a grade if you want a grade, but it doesn't figure into their GPA. And so, um, that's a difficult scenario. And I will tell you that Laura worked diligently with every one of the principals, every one of the assistant principals, our leadership team, all of the cabinet members. And it, it wasn't a Laura decision, a Don decision. Don will take the ultimate responsibility, but, but we have 100% support from the entire leadership team in that this is the best system for our students. I don't know if that helps, but it's.
Well, it, it, I mean, it doesn't help. I, I mean, quite honestly, I, I feel like we're letting down a huge population of our, of our district, quite honestly. I mean, specifically high school students. Um, you, you know, and, and furthermore, I mean, if I'm a high school student and, you know, Laura's comment in, in one of her responses was, you know, it's, it's really not going to hamper learning. I mean, I, I'll say bold to that right now because quite honestly, if you tell me I'm, I'm either going to pass or fail, why would I bother to put in any more effort than I humanly need to to get a D minus? It's the same score for me. Why would I bother? I mean, listen, I'm all about working smarter, not necessarily harder. And if you're telling me that Joe Schmo and I are going to be equal at the end of the day, whether he gets an A plus and I get a D minus, why would I care to put in the extra time or the effort? Why would I do that? Won't that frustrate students? Me as a parent, I'm highly frustrated by that. Me as a teacher, I, I feel like that's a slap in my face. Why am I bothering to do all this work for my students when half of them are going to be like, score? Doesn't matter if I do this or not, I'm still passing. I, I, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I don't agree with this. And I don't really care what the other districts are doing, quite frankly. We're here to do what's right for our students. And I hear you that administrators might think it's right, but did we survey all the teachers?
No, we didn't.
Okay, so, so in that respect then, we, we haven't really done due diligence. I, I mean, have we reached out to the, especially classes where students, um, you know, I, I would guess there are students who really have a hard time with math, right? There are some students who are math wizards, there are other students who are not. So I, I mean, if I'm a math teacher, I want to get to all my students. And the only way I know students are participating, um, is through their participation. And the only way I know they're learning is through their assessment of some sort, whether it's a test, a quiz, I, we're not going to argue about all that. But I mean, we could basically have students who, who really learn nothing for the rest of the semester, but they pass. That, that's what we're setting ourselves up here for. And I, I have a serious, want to be on record as this is a serious problem for me as a parent. This is a serious problem for me as an elected official. And, and I think we're doing our kids a dirty service here. This isn't fair to kids who are trying to build their GPA. And while I, I can appreciate your comment that it's either all or nothing, why are we treating this different than if we're in the classroom? I mean, if we have a student who doesn't put forth the effort in the classroom, you know, that, that would show in their grade. It should be the same way if they're at home. It shouldn't just be pass or fail. That seems like an easy way out to all of this to me. Now I can appreciate it's got to be done differently. And I would also argue at the college level that, um, I'm not so sure that's 100% right because I have a college student and she was, uh, asked to make the decision. Did, did she want to go pass fail or did she want her grades to count for her GPA? So I'm not so sure that's 100% for all universities because my student goes to UW-Ashgash. So, um, you know, I, I get we're in unprecedented times, but that doesn't mean that we should sit by and, and take the easy way out here. I mean, we're very creative people. We're the best district, uh, around, if you ask me. That's why I'm here. And I really think we need to have the best solution. I, I'm just really disappointed in this.
I, I totally echo what Nancy is saying. Um, and maybe that, I have three high school students in this house who are all pretty serious students. And they are going to be deeply disappointed if they're working their butts off and getting that A. And the person that's slacking off in their class and they know who those people are, are going to get the same grade as them. It's really going to be frustrating to them. Um, and as Nancy said, like, I'm worried about my freshmen who are, you know, building up this GPA that, that really want to go for that class rank at the end of their four years. And while we are dealing with unprecedented times, it, it's a short-term thing. This isn't going to go on for four years. This, we can't make decisions now that are going to impact their, their career, their, their high school career, their college career for a short-term problem. Uh, I'm frustrated by it, just like Nancy. I did look at, um, Madison today. They are doing what, um, it sounds like Ashgash is doing as well. It's that the student or family gets to pick how their, their grades are going to come in. I don't, I don't know what the answer is. This, everyone, this is new to everybody. You know, everybody, I get that, but I think we really need to examine what's bad for the students.
I, I like, uh, Nancy and, and Erin's suggestion to consider letting the student or parents decide if they do pass fail or a grade. Um, that, that puts, puts it into their hands and not. We don't want to take that away from them. It's a hard choice, but it's, I don't think it's ours to make. It's a hard choice, but it's, I don't think it's ours to make.
Yeah, and so, yeah, and I can tell you that it's a, um, you know, when we look at the decision, we looked at it based on, we've got kids in our district, and Tim talked about it, that, that really have almost very, very limited accessibility to internet. That they're taking care of younger brothers and sisters.
Which is why, which is why the pass fail, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's why the pass fail option is, is available.
Yeah, and so, at, at the same time, everybody still has seven semesters worth of GPA. And I, I know it's not eight, and I know there are kids that, that really goof up that first year, ninth grade, and like the second, or first semester, ninth grade, and the second ninth grade brings them up, or the junior year. And so this really becomes part of an issue as to, is to, are you learning because I'm requiring you to do it? And I know these are fourteen, fifteen, seventeen year old kids. They're not, they're not adults, and they're not doing it for the, 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 the big picture. Many of them are doing it for, for the requirements. They want the A, they want the whatever, as opposed to the, the quest for knowledge. And so, and I, I mentioned earlier that typically, the, the best and brightest, and even though Erin's kids might get a, a pass rather than an A, if they still do the work, they're gonna be more susceptible to, or more likely to be successful next year because they're starting at a different level. That they, they, they've gained what the expectations are for the class. And that's, that's not necessarily because I got an A. It's because I, I like chemistry, and I wanna learn chemistry, and I know that that's big picture, and that's not the way high school kids think. Because every one of us were as a high school kid at one point in time. And sometimes it was the, the pass, path of least resistance is how I got through. And I understand that, and so, um, you know,
Well, I mean, Don, not to interrupt again, but I, I mean, I can appreciate all those comments. But what are you gonna say to the junior? Who, who we just said to them, you know, I, I get you were killing it this year, and I'm real sorry that you didn't get into Oshkosh now, and now you're gonna have to go to the community college. What if their plans were to go somewhere and we messed that up for them?
And I don't have a crystal ball. I don't believe that schools around the nation aren't gonna be looking at this semester.
And we don't know that.
Well, I just, from, from, you know, what I'm seeing and what I'm reading, and like I said, you're right, I don't know that. I just know that, that Wisconsin, West Bend is not unique, that every state in the Union is doing similar. Almost every state in the Union has called off school for a good portion of the second semester, whether it's the whole second semester or not, that, um, I, I just can't believe, and I don't know that, that, that University of Minnesota or Wisconsin, or, or Oshkosh, or La Crosse, or anywhere else isn't gonna look at grades this semester and say, you know what? This was kind of the, the semester that didn't make a lot of sense. And so, um, you know, I, I, I can't tell you that they're gonna get in with a two eight when they typically want a three oh, I don't know that. And I, I would be lying if I said that that's what's gonna happen, because I, I don't have that crystal ball. I just know that almost every state in the Union, every city in Wisconsin is in the same boat. And that is that whether we give them an A for the class or not, I'm telling you that the A in the class that they're taking right now is not the same as the A in the classes they took last semester, okay? It still might be that they met more criteria than somebody who got a D, but, but it's not the same for that student who took algebra last year, and now is taking algebra this year, because our expectations are different for algebra this year than they were last year. And, 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 you know, I don't, you know, we can agree to disagree, and certainly the, the board makes the final decisions on certain things. This is not a policy type question. This is just a, a grading component. And what we had looked at was for the time that we're out of school, um, to have a pass fail type scenario. We've had two weeks of grades so far, and that's where we're at. This is week three that we are actually into getting grades. And so, um, you know, I, I, it, um, I know from the skyward perspective, I can't say that we can't make it work, because there are districts that are making it work. I, I just, that would be, um, making a statement that's not accurate if I said that, um, it has to be all or nothing, because I know we can make exceptions if we decide we're gonna make those exceptions. Laura, I don't know, I, I'm, I'm babbling. I, I'm just, I know that based on, on recommendations from our group, that's what, this is why we came up to where we're at.
We had a lot of concern and conversation about how, when given the choice, you can manipulate that. And, um, as, as someone who is very good at calculating that out, will be able to really advantage themselves if they have the opportunity to pick, pat, select pass fail or, um, ABC. And with that, the opportunity to have it count in your GPA or not count in your GPA. You can really manipulate the situation there, and then therefore really boost your class rank, um, if you're strategic.
So Laura, Nancy or Erin, just real quick, Nancy or Erin, are you suggesting that the student does it for one hundred percent of their classes? Or they get to pick and choose which class they wanna do it for?
No, I would say, I would say, this is Nancy, I would say it should be for all. I mean, you either choose all or none. So either they all count, or they don't all count. You don't get to pick and choose. I mean, obviously, who's not gonna say, okay, I want my, you know, highest class to count, and I want all the other ones not to count? Of course not. I'm saying it should be across the board. If I'm like, yes, I, I want physics and, you know, all my other classes to count. Yes, it needs to be, everything's counting, or nothing, or everything's pass fail, in my mind. I'm not speaking for Erin.
Yep, I, I agree, Nancy.
I agree. I agree with that.
But are you talking to each individual student? You're not, you're, so I'll play devil's advocate on that. What if I'm a, a student who's more structured? I need to be in a classroom to be successful. And I'm really struggling with this virtual learning stuff, so I'm gonna pick pass fail. But everyone else who picks GPA, well, that's gonna move me down in class rank.
Well, not clearly, because you're just being frozen at what you're at right now. So this one semester is not gonna help you or hurt you.
You just get seven semesters to amortize it over, or to build your GPA rather than the A. So there's two questions, and one is class rank, and one is GPA. And so the GPA component, you're absolutely right in that you can build or reduce your GPA. And so that's, the, the key is that, obviously, as a junior, all As make a difference. They don't make as much of a difference as when you're a freshman, because you're dividing by a bigger, you know, you've got more credits involved, okay? And so class rank is one thing, and GPA is another. And so Joel's comment is it can impact your class rank. Because I, I'm froze. I'm gonna have seven semesters, somebody else is gonna have eight. It won't impact my GPA for that particular one. I'm just gonna do a seven semester GPA rather than an eight semester GPA, but. Um, so, so I, I'm hearing, um, from several of the board members that you want some options. We haven't heard from all of them. Chris, what are your thoughts? I see you on my screen right now. What, what are your thoughts, um, from the professional lawyer perspective, that, um, whatever, that, you know, I, I, I just, I don't see it as gonna be detrimental for college, but then I don't have a crystal ball. And so I do see that somebody might go up or down in their class, in their GPA, based on, on us giving them opportunities. Certainly can't pick and choose. It has to be either they're all in, or they're not all in, and kinda go from there. So Chris, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, so, yeah, my, my thoughts are, um, we have, we have an unusual problem. And it's not a perfect problem where there's a perfect solution. Um, I'm, uh, I like the idea of giving the, giving the students, and I hope with parent input, the option of, of picking. Because we talked about haves and have nots. We talked about individuals who will learn better in a classroom, individuals that maybe learn better remotely. And because of the unusual nature of the circumstance, because, you know, perhaps we weren't as, as prepared as we would have liked to be, uh, then there should be, there should be flexibility. Uh, I like, I like having the, having the option. Uh, I understand that certain schools may give it as well, meaning the colleges might give it. But I think with this flexibility, it, it helps make this imperfect problem just a little bit better.
Kurt, you have a senior this year, what are your thoughts?
So I'm hearing all the thoughts. And having a senior and two kids go through the school system, I'm in favor of what, it's all about the kids, maybe I'll just say. So those that work hard should have the option of getting rewarded. So I guess I'm, I'm in favor of some of the comments that people said that kids should have the option of, yeah, receiving a grade if they want, or getting a pass fail if they want. Um, I know from just seeing somebody work hard and put the effort in. You can, not to go on, but, right, you can, from hearing Tim, we're trying to make it as available to as many people as possible. Um, the people that take the effort to, to connect and work and work towards a grade should be rewarded. Maybe I'll just end it there. So I'm in favor of what a lot of the board members had just said.
Paul, I know you said a little bit, what are, you have kids as well, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm, I'm all about having the incentive out there. Um, you know, I, all three of my girls, and, and I would hazard to guess that probably, you know, a hundred percent of our students, when we come to finals time, they've all done the math, and they figured out, you know what, I need to get a sixty-five or better to, um, maintain an A in this class. They, they've worked the numbers. Um, so they, they, they want the incentive, they want the reward. Um, I guess my, my other question would be, you know, at what point, if, if we agree to offer an option, at what point in time do they need to make that decision? Do we do that now, or do we let them go all the way to the end of the, end of the semester? And, and their, their performance between now and then would certainly, uh, elicit where their thoughts are heading on it. But, you know, if, if, if somebody gives it their best effort and feels the need to do pass fail at the end of the semester, if we end up staying in this remote learning mode, uh, until June, I, I guess, you know, I don't see the downside of, of letting, of pushing it to the back end so long as the systems can accommodate that kinda timing.
Um, you know, one of the things, and so we can take it back to the drawing board a little bit, but you, you have to remember that, that we don't have a system in place that allows us the opportunity to make sure that Chris is taking the test instead of Kurt, or that Joel is, is doing the work instead of Joel's older, smarter brother, or, or whatever the case might be. And so that, that becomes part of the challenge is that we, we really don't have any mechanisms in place. And I'm not saying that we, we aren't gonna have kids do good work, and ninety percent of the kids are gonna do their own work. I know that, okay? But, but we don't have the, the assessment capabilities that we would typically have if we were a virtual school, as opposed to a traditional school that's doing online learning. And that becomes a little bit of a challenge, because there is no, there is really no checks and balances as to how we do things.
That's, that's a very valid concern, um, and one that we can't eliminate, um, entirely. And the way, the way I'm viewing this is, um, yes, there's a chance that there's, that that's gonna happen. You know, you don't know who's taking the test, that's the thing. Um, i- if we allow people to choose for, say, one student, like Nancy said, all of their classes for that semester, they're on grade point. Um, for them to be organized enough to cheat that well for all their classes would be incredible.
I don't think they're gonna be, I, I'm not worried about that. I'm just saying is that we don't have the mechanism in place. We're, we're not a virtual school. We, we don't have the ability to do some of the projects that we would like to have, to do some of those other kinds of things. What I don't know is those kids who are doing, uh, doing internships, apprenticeships, do, do we, they can't go out and do the work anymore. They're, they're, that's been shut down. Do, do we, do we allow them to do pass fail or get a grade when there's no opportunity for them to do the work for the grade, because they can't go out and do the, the, on the job like they were doing two months ago?
What percentage of students are doing internships?
I'd have to look that up, I don't have that off the top of my head.
I don't want to use either. They have part of people that do internships, I don't know, it's not twenty-five percent, it's not fifty percent. But we have quite a few every year that do an internship and stuff like.
Percentage of the student body, it's ra- rather small. Um, I, I guess, I wanna do a discuss for kids, but I don't wanna be, you know, pulling out these, these, these one offs, these, um, these very small situations in the grand scheme of things. Because no- nothing's gonna be perfect. I mean, we're dealing with circumstances that are very imperfect. And we need to just aggregately not, not, you know, let these small things weigh us down.
I agree, it's, but it's really, it's, it's a very much a struggle, because you're, you don't wanna advantage one child over the other. And, um, yet you wanna, um, what's important is that we're providing the, um, education that is best for them in this moment, in this time. And that really is what's essential. And I really do think that our teachers have worked really, really hard during this time, the, and going forward. Um, I know they've, they've, it's been challenging, but they're planning forward during, um, again, to the best of their ability. And I would say beyond what they thought their ability was, because of the amount of collaboration and connection that they've been doing in order to, um, you know, they're, they're trying to self, um,
That, that's an excellent point. I, I actually think, I think pass fail is insulting to the teachers too, because they're busting their butts. And pass fail just, it, it, it negates all this work that they've done to, to rise through this situation.
I don't think it negates their work, I would disagree with you on that point. I think they, um,
Keep your mind.
Yeah, I just think that the information they get is, in this environment, in this context, is very different from what they would normally get.
So to try to bring things to a little bit of a close, because it's already twenty to ten, but I, I don't wanna shortchange a good discussion. Laura, we have, um, we haven't officially did anything to the, to the parents yet, to the whatever. We strictly, it's always been draft, and this was out on board docs, because we wanted to get the information out to board docs as quickly as we can, but it says draft right across it. And so can, can, can we, should we go back to the drawing board a little bit in the high school? And see if there's a way that we can give, you can't cherry pick. You can't pick and choose which classes you're gonna pass fail in, and which ones you're gonna take for credit. And it's a, a decision that parents and students have to make. And students, if they're over eighteen, they can make it on their own. If they're under eighteen, they have to have parent, parent decision as well. Um, i- is that something that we, you and I can discuss tomorrow and figure out what's the, what's a possibility? And we'll, and not just you and I, but the entire leadership team, the entire, um, um, cabinet, and figure out if there's a middle of the road option that works best for everybody?
I think that, um, I'll make sure it's on our agenda. Um, I mean, I know it already is for the week, but, um, uh, I'll make sure that we have adequate time for that discussion. Um, I know it's already on the agenda, but we'll check for adequate time for that discussion. And, um, just to clarify, the- And, um, just to clarify, the, there were no further questions about the K8 plan, correct?
Just strictly 9/12, this is where the biggest issue was, was pass fail for the high school. Okay. Um, the only other question I have and that's a board, and it's not necessarily a board decision, but a board would like a directive from you as far as your thoughts. Do, do we have a knockdown date that they have to make the decision? Can they, can they say we're going to pass until the very end and then, or we're going to do a grade until the very end or or do we, you know, we talked about the seniors and early graduation, we're going to give them the option up until the first of May to make that decision? If they're going to drop classes, they have until the such and such time to drop a class and just take the required for graduation, okay? Do we want, if we're going to do something that is optional grades, GPA, instead of strictly pass fail, is there a date that we think it makes sense, May 15th, May 1st, May whatever, um, as opposed to last minute, I would switch my mind the last day before grades come out and and kind of go, what are your thoughts?
May 15th is a Friday, that's the date I was just looking at. The, the other, the other wrinkle I'll throw out there just for debate purposes is what happens if May 1st or May, May 4th would be the more logical date, we're back in the buildings. I think there's been enough upheaval this semester already that it's impacted grades. I think we need to commit, if we're going to do this, we're doing this regardless of the status of whether we go back into the building or not this, the rest of the semester.
That was our intent, was that whatever we come up with truly is, we're not going to say it's pass fail for six weeks and now you are going to get a grade based on the last four weeks of of school. And so, um, Paul, I think you're right in what, if we come back in May, then I think whatever we decide soon is going to have to follow through for the rest of the school year. Thank you. We will get something to the board by no later than Monday and we'll prefer to have it out by Friday of this week. But we'll have leadership and cabinet support and, um, comments going forward, just like we had in the past.
It sounds good and I appreciate, uh, you asking for the feedback of the board and and like you said a handful of times, um, this is truly in the purview of the superintendent and and cabinet and leadership team. And, uh, like it or not, uh, board members, uh, this is one that we, uh, certainly can give our input in, but this is why we hire a superintendent and, uh, and cabinet team to make these decisions. And so again, I thank you for your input on this. If there's other questions that board members have, I encourage you to call, uh, or email or whatever you like to do with superintendent and assistant superintendent Laura Jackson and get your questions answered, so.
Okay, and and the bottom line is, and I know everybody said it, what we want to do is what's best for kids. And so I, that's truly the, the ultimate decision is, it's not what's easiest, it's not what's, whatever, it's what's best for kids.
Yeah. Um, we are getting pretty darned close, it's 9:45, Laura, and I don't want to cut you off here, but are you, uh, anything else you'd like to add as far as our distance learning update?
Um, the other items on there that weren't already discussed was just really summer school and we're continuing forward with that, that information was in there. Um, with summer school, we're continuing forward, planning, unless we hear otherwise from the state or that if we end up out for the whole year, that could impact how we do summer school, uh, if we're allowed to be face to face or not. There is a proposed emergency bill before the, uh, legislature which does not allow for, currently we are not, we, we don't do summer school virtually at all grade levels in the state of Wisconsin and the emergency provision does not expand that to all grade levels. So summer school could potentially be impacted and, um, but at this point, we're planning forward as if we'll be in summer school. You're, you're planning as if there will be summer school? Right now, yes, because our, right now, our date to return is still the 27th until we hear otherwise from the governor. Yeah. Ready? Yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, I, I know you gotta just, you know, yeah, until you have to proceed as you would if nothing was happening, I, I get that. If, if, um, and then again, the, we're not allowed to do virtual at all grade levels in Wisconsin if that, um, and right now, the emergency bill does not include expanding that. So, um, if we're not allowed to be in larger groups in the summer yet, that will impact how we can deliver that instruction. That's all, Joel, that was on the.
Uh, thank you very much. Any, any other questions for Laura Jackson? If not, we will move on to our superintendent's report.
Three quick items, we're going to officially do the canvas of the election on Wednesday at 3 o'clock. And so we've got, it has to have three canvassers, we'll do it in the boardroom and, uh, we're trying to get the results, uh, Jen is working on getting that information, so we'll do the official board canvas of the election on Wednesday at 3. April 27th is our next meeting.
Hang, hang on, is that, that's the one, that's the one where the clerk is?
Yeah, but I don't know, we're double checking, since you were up for election, I don't know if you can be part of the canvas, you might have to sign off, but you're not one of the official canvassers because you were on the ballot. And so, uh, we've got three others that are, that are going to do the canvas excluding you.
Sorry, okay, thank you.
Yep. Um, April 27th was our next board meeting, it was designed to be a, a meeting of the whole, um, we'd probably like to do it as a regular board meeting instead of a meeting of the whole, uh, hopefully you'll have a new superintendent, uh, to approve at that point in time, some other things. We can still have some, some committee type meetings. Laura's going to reach out to the, um, to the, um, policy committee to see if we can meet virtually before that. If we do, we'll have to set up the same format because that has to be a public meeting and we'd have to have an ability for them to, to call in as well. And then the last one I had is Joel, if you can get me the, the letters that you read today, we'll get those posted. Uh, we did have a comment from one of the people, asked if we could take their address off, leave the name on, but I think that would be, uh, prudent for us to do so, that that we'll keep the name on but not the address that we post.
Do we normally, um, post the addresses from the period of public comment in the meeting minutes? I don't recall, I'm sorry.
I, I do not believe so, Laura. We don't necessarily put in the minutes who spoke on each one, we'll, we'll double check and make sure, but but, uh, even so, even if we put it in the minutes, there's a lot of people that don't want their home address out on the internet and so I think the name is there, they've done all the things that they needed to do to be a presenter at a meeting. I, I don't think it would be out of line for us to take their physical address off of the post that we put online. And that's all I had.
Very good. Our board meeting calendar, I'll just reiterate a few of the comments, uh, that superintendent just made, on Wednesday, April 15th at 8:30 a.m., we are conducting a closed session, uh, with superintendent interviews. And again, on Wednesday, April 15th at 3 o'clock is the board of canvases meeting, both of those meetings have already been posted. On April 27th, uh, policy committee members, let's plan on a policy meeting at 4 o'clock. Um, we'll either do that virtually or set it up, uh, in the boardroom, um, more details on that. And then also on April 27th, uh, regular school board meeting at 5:30 and will likely be a, uh, virtual meeting as well. Uh, the unofficial, uh, school board election results tonight showed, uh, Nancy Justman, Tommy Schmidt, myself, uh, winning reelection and so congratulations, uh, on that. And I apologize to our administrators that you're going to have to work with the three of us for another, uh, three years. But also on, um, April 27th will be where we officially swear in, uh, school board members and elect officers on the school board for the next year. So we'll be thinking about that and, uh, that's our upcoming calendar. Any questions or, uh, any other comments before we adjourn tonight?
This is, this is Andy Sarnow, I don't know if you guys can hear me right now. Don, can you nod? Okay, good. Um, I, I confirmed with the public, thank you, I confirmed with public, uh, comments that, uh, in the board official minutes, we do post the person's name, their address and the topic that they covered during their comments. It is not published in the newspaper, but it is in the formal minutes. So for consideration with the people that emailed in tonight, uh, we may want to still include that information, but maybe not their actual comments. Um, you know, we could, we could remove that with, in the email, but just FYI.
Yep, cool. Thanks for looking at that and thank you for, uh, the city community television for sticking with us. It was a long meeting tonight, but, uh, covered a lot of topics and, uh, appreciate everyone who tuned in and, uh, with that, I will motion to adjourn.
Second by Paul Fisher.
Second by Paul Fisher. Any questions, comments, discussion before we adjourn tonight? Ms. Dove?
Yes.
And Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Justman?
Yes.
Mr. Reddholz?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Zweigert?
Yes.
And I am a yes. You all have a great night. Thank you, Tim and the gang for setting us up and thanks for sticking with us. Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Night.
Thank you, good night.